The world must listen. As long as we preach this very gospel, Chukwokika Biamma must be with us. Therefore, without any further hesitation, we must proceed to offer every prayer to Chukwokikia Biamma who reside in heaven. Therefore, as we always commence, not from today but from of old, our Father who art in heaven, nanyinkebe ne lige, kahage denso, that your name may be hallowed by men, that we may bow at the mention of it, that we may offer every glory unto thee, that we may offer you every adoration and adulation, because there is none like thee. You fight our battles for us. Every blessed day you demonstrate through your kindness and your everlasting mercy that you are our Lord, our God and our Creator. This evening we offer this your all over this very planet that you created, they are listening across the entire twenty-four time zones on this very planet. We are the inhabit, they are listening to your gospel this very evening. This gospel of redemption, a gospel of hope, a gospel of restoration, a gospel of renewal, this very gospel of freedom, this very gospel of emancipation as only you ordained. Onye primi hani ne that this very gospel must be preached, that mankind may be set free from the eternal damnation of the creation of the British. My goodness me, I want to remain in the Spirit because we must worship heaven. We answer your name, oh Lord of hosts. Everything about us is designed to offer glory unto thee. We have atoned for our sins last year. This very year we have not only atoned for our sins, we have spilled, we have shed blood, they have shed our blood. We have let our sacrifice be made unto thee. Even on the third year of August, as we are being failed by the bullets of the enemy, by the workers of iniquity and of darkness, we remain very strong today to beckon upon thee, to ask you for your mercy and for your grace, to ensure that your kingdom is restored upon the face of the earth, that you can bring your healing hand to bear upon the life of those of them that you created for one singular purpose and that purpose alone, which is to worship you in truth and in every honesty. Is there any way that we have heard? Is there any way that our ancestors may have seen? We confess before a congregation of the whole of humanity to ask you, oh Lord of hosts, to have mercy upon us. Biko mera nyebere tineke nani lige? You must have mercy upon us. We have suffered enough. We have been subjugated enough. We have been tortured enough. We have been imprisoned enough. We did not do these people anything. Our only crime is to answer your name. Our only crime is to be born your children. Our only crime is to excel at everything that we place our hands into. Our only crime is to exhibit your glory and your blessing, which manifestedly is upon our lives every blessed day. That is why they want to kill us. That is why the British want to join those of them who don't know you, to destroy your creation and your inheritance. You will not allow shame to befall your name. You will not allow the enemies to triumph over the lives of your children because you created us to exist, to worship, to honor and to praise you. That is exactly what we are going to do when this Biafra comes. It will come in truth and in every honesty because we remain every blessed day. Chukwa Biamma be ne lige whiter than white and whiter than snow. Oh, wo zanyi si mehe yuchineke? Is there any way that we have seen that you cannot forgive us, our trespasses, to enable us to fulfill your own word which was spoken thousands of years ago? That instead of what you promised not to come to pass, that heaven and earth wishes to exist? You opened your mouth, Chukwokika Biamma, to bless mankind to the coming of Yahweheshua, who came here and said, "Let your kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven." Those words can never be in vain because they are anchored upon your holiness and your magnificence. That is why in the end we know that Biafra will come, that these children that we have given birth to all over the world and their children and their children and their children, as long as they give birth to them and they are Biafrans, Chukwokika Biamma, hage fe ro fe. They will worship you in truth and honesty. Through this very work we are doing, mankind will come to understand you. Let your miracle be roused in our lives. Let us witness and behold your magnificence, your holiness, your mystery and your grace under our command. Oh Lord of hosts, we call upon you. We call upon you to heal. We call upon you to provide succor to those of them who are inconsolable. We ask you to come and strengthen those who are weak. We ask you to restore hope where there is hopelessness. We ask you for inclusion where there is destitution. We ask you for one brotherhood, one camaraderie, one bone, one blood and one flesh of your children. The ethics and the bibios, the ison, the shekiri, the isobos and also those of them from Isoko. We are traveling all the way to the lands of Igala. We are moving on from there to Idoma, to Ige, to the territories of the Ibo land. All these places we dedicate unto thee. All these lands of yours, we ask you to cover it with your mercy because Biafra will come and when it does, Chukwokika Biamma, nige fe ro fe noso pulete, we will dance on these streets, I'm telling you. By the time that we are done, humanity will think that we are mad, we are drunk in your glory and rightfully so because your kingdom will come to rest upon this very earth. That very kingdom is the unadulterated, non-negotiable sovereignty of the Republic of Biafra that your will may be fulfilled in our time. Nihi lucha yige mesu ruchineke? All these we pray, all these we ask for. In no other name apart from that name that belongs to you. Ahad insosinebe yebe, wonnebe yebe. He say, he say, he say, my name is Namdekanu. I am the leader of indigenous people of Biafra all over this very planet, I tell you.
Land of the rising sun we love and cherish, beloved home and of our brave heroes. We must defend our lives or we shall perish. We shall protect our hearts from all our foes. But if the price is that of all we hold dear, then let us die without a shred of fear. Hail to be a consecrated nation. Oh Fatherland, this be our solemn pledge. Defending thee shall be our dedication. Spilling our blood will count our privilege. The weapons stand that which have fallen till free shall always be a part of liberty. We shall emerge triumphant from this ordeal. And through the crucible unscape will pass. When we are void, the wounds of battle to heal. We shall remember those who guide him as. Then shall our child let fill that glorious song of victory we scored all might and wrong. Oh God protect us from the hill pitfall. Guide all our movements lest we go astray. Give us the strength to hear the human's call. To give a nod to calm the conchy chain. Let those who rule to suffer with resolution to make this land a land of righteousness.
All hail Biafra. Land of the rising sun we love and cherish. We have vanquished all enemies. All hail Biafra. God bless Biafra. In him we trust. Shout it, sing it. All hail Biafra. God bless Biafra. We have emerged triumphant from all our foes. Through the crucible unscape we passed victorious. Our trumpets pealing the glorious song. Play it, sing it. All hail Biafra. All hail Biafra. We shall always remember all that perished in the struggle for our freedom. All hail our heroes. Our prayer shall be grown both day and night. Save them always. All hail Biafra. All hail Biafra. Now our star shines everywhere. We crave humility. God guide and protect us all. All hail your wisdom shielding us from glory. Unleashed by your light and bent, Biafra, Biafra shining forever.
We celebrate them as we continue to fight on to see that Biafra is fully restored. He say, he say, he say, thank you, thank you, thank you to everyone and welcome to Habeni State Town Hall Meeting. And without wasting much of our time, I welcome the presence of the acting Prime Minister, His Excellency on the block Kichukonkarre with the entire Cabinet of BRGIA, de facto and in exile. I salute all of you for your good works and all you've been doing. Yesterday was a fundraising and today we are here for another town hall meeting. We must continue because Biafra is here and we have a lot to do. Thank you so much for all of you that have attended this very town hall meeting and we look forward to seeing what Habeni State have for the Biafran people. Over to you, Honorable Experience, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Over to you, sir. Go ahead with your program.
Okay, thank you so much, Honorable Minister of Information and Acting Prime Minister. So please, co-host, Emmy Solo, co-host Emmy Solo, you have the role to play. Emmy Solo. Emmy Solo, raise your hand up. And the allies of Habeni State. Co-host also allies of Habeni State. Please, if I call your name, raise your hand up. Uh, okay. Uh, thank you so much, uh, the Minister of Information and permit me to invite Habeni State Admin. It's because of network that we are just assisting him. Habeni State Admin, please, the network is okay now? Amutya Sef, Habeni State Admin, Amutya Sef. Oh, still battling with network. Okay. Habeni, can you hear us, please? Okay, we're trying to waste no time because of network and I have been testing me over that. Uh, let me just use this opportunity to welcome in this town hall meeting with APM. I greet our Minister of Information. I greet APM and his et tuarch, the homeland. We are Habeni are so much happy to have you in the midst of us. Um, we make it as a promise that others may do, but Habeni will not be part of it. Despite the Chinigans, the Madame Babao and other people did. Uh, we're still moving forwards and making progress. We know that the Habeni is a home of resources and they have been doing a marvelous work. And we continue doing a great work because of this work is ordained by Elohim. And we must make it to everyone that we are not doing any competition with anybody, but we are doing according to the directions of Elohim and also direction of the government. Because the voice of masses is a voice of gods. Habeni have their voice to voice out that they are under the leadership of APM and that they must remain where APM instructed them to be. And today we call this town hall meeting because I must ensure everybody that this is the I should be a second time so first time of having a Habeni Town Hall Meeting. And we believe that through this town hall meeting, we stretch the hand of fellowship to other peoples, other states that around us who are still sleeping. Um, they should learn for Habeni that Habeni are reliant on the instruction of governments, not instruction of individuals. And they make sure that every documents or everything that our APM submitted to them almost hold its frame until the government will be matured. So we welcome everybody in this, um, town hall meeting. And we promise that everybody that appear in this meeting, Elohim will appear in their family and bless them and remember them for their good work. And we pray that everyone that appear in this meeting will appear in a good color. But prevent sure we find any intruders in this place. Um, our prayer is that whatever you are thinking over Habeni, we think for you. But we believe that not intruders will be here, but don't mix yourself to be intruders in spiritual or physical. And I appreciate everyone's, on behalf of Habeni, our Habeni are welcoming everybody in this town hall. And we are looking forwards to also to seeing our people that is outside also to wake their mindsets and contribute a little they can contribute. And want to draw attention of other indigenous of Habeni that the tenner that you contribute in your weekly fundraises can save a thousands of soul in your fatherlands. So a little you give can save a soul. But if you are among those that still remain in a neutral, I must tell you that neutral means stagnation. When once you say you are in neutral, you will remain stagnations. And when once you are stagnations, your future and everything that you are doing will be remain stagnation because you said that you are neutral and peoples are dying. And we pray that none of the citizen of Habeni will remain neutral. You must come out to funds to make sure that your people is safe under the leadership of BRG. Thank you so much and APM's which executive. You're welcome, sir. Thank you, sir, and God bless you. Thank you so much, Minister of Information. Yes, our next agenda over here, I will hand over, I will call attention of, uh, uh, the presentation of, um, of the color notes, by breaking of the color notes, Honorable Prince, Emma Solo. Over to you, sir.
Good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Prince Emmy Solo. I'm the Habeni Commissioner of Culture and Theory. I thank our able APM for coming to my state. And also thank my admin and my fellow citizens for us to be here today. It is a great honor for me and to allow all of us to be here today. So, our able Minister of Information, I really appreciate your good work for Biafran because it's not easy for all of us to always been, we've always seen our work everywhere. So, I don't have much to say. But I believe if not because of network, our admin have much things to say, but I believe that our Secretary of the States, we play the role of our admin. So, where is the deputy and administrator and secretary? I believe they will make a move before I know where to start. Thank you.
Yes, Emmy Solo, yes, you are the charge of breaking, uh, you work on the other, like a ego's right, the color notes. Your name?
No.
Ego's right, the color.
It's Alice Wilam.
Okay. Uh, see, present, presentation of breaking of color by Prince Emmy Solo. Okay, it's Alice. Alice, can you co-host, Alice, can you raise your hand up over there? Alice. Okay, Alice, yes, go ahead, Alice. Okay.
Okay, thank you so much. Yes. Thank you so much, Biafran, welcome Biafran. I greet every citizens of Biafran all over the world. You people are highly welcome to Habeni State Town Hall Meeting. And I greet Biafra Brig Government in Ezai. I also greet Biafra Brig De Fato Government in homeland. You people are highly welcome. We, we the Habeni citizens, we are so much happy for having our government around us today so that we can narrate our needs and they are, we also hear from us and know we are to support the northern, the northern region in Biafra Nation. Thank you, Biafran. I have here a color with me that we the Habeni States, we bring to present to Chukwokika Biamma. I have Ojibo. That is our tradition in Biafra land. Here with me to present to Chukwokika Biamma and to present to Biafra Government, Biafra Brig Government and to present to every citizens of Biafran that we come and eat this color from Habeni State. The color of life and health and freedom and wisdom and knowledge. That is what Habeni State citizens have for their government today. So thank you so much, our government. And I present the color note to Chukwokika Biamma. I'm using this color note on behalf of Biafra Nation to thank Chukwokika Biamma for his great work because there is nothing we can give to Chukwokika Biamma that will be enough. There is nothing Biafra Nation we give to Chukwokika Biamma that will be enough for what he have been doing for us as a nation, for what he have been doing for us as individual in different destination that we live today. I thank Chukwokika Biamma with this color for his goodness and kindness. This color, I suppose to present it in the language of heaven, but because of those who don't understand the language. So I'm taking the permission from the language of heaven to present it to general language that all of us we understand. So thank you so much. Chukwokika Biamma, thank you. I thank you for your goodness and for your kindness unto us, unto Biafra Nation. Unto your sons and daughters, unto your choosing ones, our leaders. Those who you, those that you have ordained for them to be the warriors. For them to be in the front line to make sure that that your kingdom on earth is being fully restored. That the kingdom of Chukoka Biam on earth is Biafra Nation. Chukoka Biam, there is nothing that we the Biafra people we give to you. To appreciate you for your goodness and for the good things that you are about to do for us, that will be enough. So the little that we have presented to you, we thank you. May you accept it. I thank you unto the life of our Supreme Leader Mazinamdekanu. I thank you for the gift of life, I thank you for the gift of heads unto him. Chukoka Biam, I also plead to you for your victory unto our Supreme Leader Mazinamdekanu. May you grant him victory. May our leader Mazinamdekanu come out victorious and meet us, Biafra Nation. Now I give you Chukoka Biam. Chukoka Biam, I also thank you unto the life of our Prime Minister Simon Epan Joko. Our Prime Minister, those that you have ordained, those that you have called. For them to lead your children into the promised land of Biafra Nation. I thank you on top the, upon the life of our Prime Minister Simon Epan Joko. I thank you for the gift of life, I thank you for the gift of heads. I thank you for your protection and for your kindness unto him. Chukoka Biam, I also plead to you for victory unto our Prime Minister Simon Epan Joko. May our Prime Minister Simon Epan Joko come out victorious and meet us. Now I give you Chukoka Biam. Chukoka Biam, I also thank you unto Biafra Break Government. I thank you also unto the Biafra Break Government Defense Forces. I thank you unto all those that you have been using unto the cabinet to do your way. I thank you unto the life of our acting Prime Minister Ogechukwu Nkere. I thank you for your protection, I thank you for your guidance. May you, God Almighty, continue to guard him. May you Chukoka Biam grant him victory in all justification. In all offices that Biafra Nation are entering, are entering to gain favor from the world. May you, God Almighty, continue to live with him. May you, God Almighty, continue to be with him. May you, God Almighty, continue to grant Biafra Nation victory. Now I give you Chukoka Biam. Chukoka Biam, I thank you unto the Biafra Break Government Defense Forces. Those who have been protecting Biafra land. I thank you for the gift of life upon them head. I thank you for the gift of heads, I thank you for your protection and for your guidance. I thank you for the victory that you have been granting unto them. For what we are fighting is our rights. We have never go to people land to take their land. But the enemy are coming to our land to take our land. They have chased us all out to Ezai and we stand strong to defend our land. Chukoka Biam, I thank you for unto the life of Biafra Defense Forces. I thank you for the victory that you have been granting to them on daily basis. I thank you, God Almighty, may you take all honor, all glory, now I Chukoka Biam. Biafra Nation, Biafra citizens, you all are welcome.
Thank you very much.
I have already present color to God Almighty, now I present the color to all creatures. I invite them to come and eat the color for us. All creatures that God Almighty, through all the creature, we see the greatness. On the god of air, for them to come and chop the color. And summon the god of sea, the god of water, for them to come and eat the color with us. And I summon the god of land and the god of sun. And the god, different continent, the god of justice, equity and justice. This indifference of our residents. Does it depend where you are? In different country of our residents, there is gods, Aro Kusay, who represent them. The god of justice and the equal rights, that is what Biafra Nation we are fighting for. I summon all the Aro Kusay of every nation to come and eat the color. Which which we this citizens of our Habinia States are presenting to Biafra Nation. May the god of Ake, may the god of Unkuo, may the god of Ole, may the god of Afo. Ake, Ole, Afo, Unkuo, may them come and eat the color. The god of Ake is the god of water and the god of Ole is the god of land. And the god of Afo is sun and the god of Unkuo is air. All these gods are what mighty god are using to perform this mightiness into this universe. We are not in quarrel with any of them. We give them what we have for them to fight for us and grant us victory. For the cause we are fighting is our rights. I summon all the gods of every nation for them to come and chop the color note. That we are presenting to Biafra Nation. For we to show them that we are not in quarrel with them. And we summon to them every of our heart desire, that what we are fighting for is our rights. I also call on the citizens of Biafra. And there we chop the color that our Habinia States present for them. For the color is cola of life, of health. Of wisdom and knowledge, of healing. That is what Biafra God represents. We are the nation of peace, live and let's live. We are the nation that respects humanity. We treat everybody as as human, we treat everybody as one of God. So what we are fighting is our rights. As I have already summoned every gods of every nation for them to come and eat what we have. So that there we fight on our behalf spiritually and physically. That is what we are asking for, Bia France. Bia France, you all are welcome. May God Almighty be with us, may God Almighty fight along our side. May God Almighty grant us victory, now I Chukoka Biam. Put me here, Nene. He say.
He say, he say.
He say oh.
He say, oh meet me, my camera. Thank you.
Thank you so much, um, our Habinia. Yeah. Yeah. The people are very big. Thank you so much, I greet everyone, um, I welcome our able uh acting Prime Minister. He just left right honorable Mazo Gichukunkere. And his entourage to our Habinia. Ah Beni, Beni Kane, I can no be. Um, uh please, um, permit me if I go on to take the color, permit me to say something because. I say, uh, a traditionalist. I wonder my friend here, he had a guy who was already collected, because. Because of, um, I had a bomb to enable because of the other. Oh, yeah, they are no be care, because. Oh, my email are only into a little bit, right? Spiritual foundation in also be come. You know, obviously, I mean, I'm a little too high, so I'm, it's where founder, that's where they do it. Oh, yeah, they are no be care. My time, my time, be care again, Ake, Bo, Anya, oh, Rebo, Mini, Afu Badala, Unkuo, Be Kuku, Be Koo. But so so, it's a reward, I believe, my boss, but I'm not see because, oh, yeah, they are no be care. Do, 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 no. That one, 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 okay. Uh huh. And they are, they are, because, and I'm, 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 um, thirty thousand, uh, sorry, uh, yeah. Whenever Roger, we're square, we're twenty eight thousand, uh, yeah. But I, we, we, welcome our A P M, like fifty thousand, uh, yeah, that one.
That one.
Thank you very much.
That one.
Okay, thank you so much, honorable uh uh Minister of Information. Uh please, um, we were spreading more hand on, raise more hands to pick your color notes. On your, over to you, sir.
Greetings, everyone, I think I'm coming out.
Yes.
Okay, I greet my honorable acting Prime Minister, honorable Ogechukwu Nkere. Okay, Chikama, and this is the time. My honorable Minister of Information, I greet you, I greet all honorable. I I just want to support uh, I'll call the number on what, on the correction we made to Alex. Uh, Oji, Oji Bo, Oji, Oji Adra Anu Bo. And the, oh, man, I live, oh, go see how it was in the beginning. I don't change it. Oji Ananu, Oyu Bo, and Ake, Ake Wu Anya Wu, Ake Anya Wu, that is why we gave the name, Ake Anya Wu. Ake is Anya Wu, Ole is Mini, whether Mini Zorizo or Mini Kala Kwa. Afo, Afo is the better, Afo Ajala, Afo is the land. And the Unkuo is the Ikuku, Kuku Ama Nonya, I won one key Kuku. On behalf of our state, I name J five, A J, nee Woge, as I'm, who do the.
Yes. We are here, you. Okay, but uh. Thank you so much, uh, where state admin, uh, Namak, Namak, what you, please. Namak. Yes, over to you.
They have done mute him.
Okay, I want to thank everybody, especially my great A P M, on the normal one of Biafra land. My Information Minister, I respect you special. Sister Betty, I thank you so much for your vigorous efforts. All the wonderful people of uh our Habinia. Habinia means uh crowd is uh elephants, so crowd is great. I am standing here on behalf of Faludo. We are taking the color or launching whatever with ten thousand, uh, yeah. May the Lord continue to strengthen you all and give you the grace to continue this wonderful exploit that you are doing. Your work will not be forgotten. Thank you so much. My receipt will be forwarded to the Minister of uh Home Affairs, Financial Home Affairs. Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, honorable, uh, Elohim, there with you. Uh, thank you so much, I have been also happy. Uh, academic highness, over to you, sir. Academic highness. Okay, academic highness, over.
Yeah, I I I can, I can, I can hear my name right now. Good, good, good evening, everybody.
Yes, yes, sir.
Hmm, I greet our able acting Prime Minister, Right Honorable Ogechukunkere. I greet also our clear Kuan of Biafra. The Minister Honorable, eh, Minister Emeritus. Of the Information and Technology. I greet Bishop Honorable Kompa, President Makeo, greet everyone here present. And uh, I told me we large from our Habinia. Now I Chukoka Biam, now he can me, Chukoka Biam, I mean, oh, wow. They have a flow of Prum Doko, it go, oh, I agree, Afo, Oleo. Yeah, hehehehe, he can not collect it, he can't know. He. Uke. He can do ma. It's a jog. Eh? He can is a doma under the Africa. Ah, not a oje no. Laando, I can collect it. Bang brum brum. Le. Fifty edge man. Anya communicate here to Honourable Sonya Aprowa. Eke le mu no under Ohabueeni. No, no, no.
Dalon. You can. Dalon. Dalon. Thank you.
Dalon.
You speak in a heavy language. Uh, may Elohim be with you. Okay, we move. John sits, John sit over to you. John.
You.
John over to you.
I call a garden. No, I didn't.
We can hear you. John sit over to you. Okay.
You have to mute him.
Okay, sorry, 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 sorry. Uh, there below. Okay. Uh, UK admin. Uh, Adankero over to you.
Okay, yeah. Anye Kenende Ohabueeni Tata. And I do quite happy. Yeah, now Ohabueeni name. Welcome APM. Now they are missed today. Okay, so because. I don't know whether. I don't know whether. Oh, la ngala, with fifty edge man. Uh, West support qua eh Ohabueeni. Eh, Tata, because. What Dalon oh. Ma we are send earlier to. I will send it to Minister Betty, my receipts.
Dalon. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Dalon.
Okay.
You. Soon over to you. Then you have given my. See I over to you. If Mike is not close. Okay. First, Emma. Over to you, sir. Emma, Emma Solo. Emma Solo, over to you.
And they won.
They will.
Yeah, I greet everybody. Yeah.
No.
Yeah, my able. Uh, GM. I throw a salute. Brother Sony, our able Minister of Information. It will kill him everybody from. I'm really happy because the way even our visitors are even surprising us. So network is disturbing our admin. And I will not take the. I will not wait for him, let me proceed from. The one which me. So. Uh, people from. Enuguiske region in Ohabueeni State. So. They have a. They have some people that decide to take cola. They forward it with the names. Uh, they have a Mase. Unless, well, I'm twenty edge. Uh, we have a. My God is good. Ten edge. And we have a master key. Twenty edge. They have a mayor. Chubs. Ten edge. Well, Prince, Emma Solo, twenty edge. They have my wisdom, ten edge. Mazi uchuku ten edge.
Hmm.
Uh. Mazi, uh. Oto di chuku ten edge. So anyways, it's total of a hundred and ten thousand, I think. Eh, any pick cola. Now, so qua our. APM. Yaga one euro, nine no. So. We will be using this opportunity to within our admin. That's why it's disturbing him. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Dalon.
Uh, yes, we call. Wada Efroma. Wada Efroma over to you. Wada Efroma over to you. Efroma.
Did you unmute? Did you unmute her?
I'm mute yourself.
I've give you.
Hello.
Hello.
Yeah, greetings, everybody. Hey, hey. Hey, hey. Honourable Sony, welcome all. All the ministers in the house, they won.
They were.
Please, Emmy Solo. Eh, Emmy Solo, are you there? Emmy Solo. He said, um. Eh, hey, how much is the total?
Hundred and ten edge.
Okay, it's all right. Thank you so much. Uh, please, I'm taking my own cola. My own cola, not the state, oh, with two thousand edge. They won.
They were.
Thank you, Wanyama. Thank you, thank you, please. I'm seeing a missed call, but you know, saying at the same phone, why they use. Are they use the duty, please? Okay, um. We call, um. Um, Alanso admin, Alanso admin over to you.
You come, I just start moving.
Alanso admin.
I'll meet, oh, I'll meet, okay, I'll meet him more.
Uh. Oh. Okay, Alanso admin.
Yeah, my able honourable, good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, no.
Uh, this is Shalanso. Administrator. Uh, I want to thank our, uh, APM. APM, thank you so much. For being with my. Sister state today, Ohabueeni State. Uh, Sonya Aprowa, our information minister. My brother, they were, thank you so much. Uh, I want to thank all the Briggy. Uh, cabinet. I can make sure your name. I welcome all of you to Ohabueeni State today. This is a great honour. Uh, Jigaro here and then my honourable. Ohabueeni State Administrator. Yes, you have make it. Thank you so much. I know it's not easy. But you, God made it possible. For you and all of us. Thank you so much. Uh, without wasting much time. Um, on behalf of my state, Alanso State. Uh, new agey, ten thousand edge. Eh, where eh oje. Me and my family. Uh, IG. Five thousand edge. A welcome our honourable APM. To Ohabueeni State. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dalon.
Dalon.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Honourable. Ohabueeni admin, yes, um. We appreciate your kindness and love. Toward Ohabueeni. Yes, when you see that it's not impossible. We will come and make it possible. And today. You have been to reality to Ohabueeni. Citizen. We are calling Kessm. Kessm, over to you, unmute yourself.
Minister Sony. Should we clap, sing for them?
You can. Back on. Akamaram. Kai gakoro, when I walk eh. Ah.
Thank you so. Thank you so much, thank you so much. We call Kessm over to you. Please unmute yourself. I was waiting for him, Wada Betty, please go ahead.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Me, I'm from Esan. So. I am waiting for these are the people to. Start their own and invite APM. APM has been very phenomenal. And I want to use this opportunity. Need to thank him. And thank the people of Ohabueeni. May God continue to bless every Biafran. That had. Made all this possible. So. Without wasting time, I will use a. Twenty thousand edge. To. Take. Usaji. For our APM. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, please.
Akamarama. Akamarama Kai gakoro, when I bait you. Ah.
Yeah, Dalon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Betty. Thank you.
Kessm. Kessm over to you, please unmute yourself. Oh, are you battle with network? Please, um. Without waste of time. Well, call. On yes, your hand is up again. On yes, your hand is up again.
Oh, what about? A meeting.
Okay, so, um. As we are progressing. I think, uh, okay. Okay. More hands. More hands. Okay. My, my honourable of interior, I greet you again. As I was trying to. Say some things before I was rudely interrupted by those that attacked. I, I want to use this opportunity as well to invite all. Well-meaning Biafrans. To Owhere State next Sunday. This is what I needed when that interruption came. Thank you.
Dalon. Hmm. We shall be there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, Jenny Anyama. Over to you.
Hmm.
Okay. Okay.
Hmm.
I think, um. Yeah, Owhere State admin just use this opportunity to pass information to all their friends. Yes, we will be there. By the special grace of Elohim. I think Minister of. Information. I think we have done a wonderful work. I think we'll go to another. Another. Points here.
You have two hands open. Two hands.
They forgot to put down his hand.
Yes. Oh, yes. So, we have been calling this, uh, this person, he have not be responding. Hmm. Staki. Staki, over to you. Staki.
Don't forget. Okay. Hmm.
Staki. I mute yourself and.
Staki was among the least, eh, Mr. Look, eh. He said that time.
Uh, okay. Staki, unmute yourself, please. Okay, I'll still waiting for him to unmute himself. Jenny, Jenny Anyama, over to you.
Meet me, please. They won no.
Thank you.
They were Jenny. Yeah, I, I don't speak more than that. I'm from Ikom State.
Uh-huh.
I'm here to welcome the APM and his entourage to.
Ohabueeni.
Alanso. What?
Ohabueeni.
Ohabueeni, thank you. Yeah, I'm. Going to pick the garden egg.
Hmm.
On behalf of Ikom State with a hundred edge man.
Wow.
And I'll send the receipt to.
Thank you.
Uh, Minister Sonya Aprowa, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Our business are surprised today.
I can follow the name.
Akamarama Kai gakoro, when I walk eh. When I walk eh. Take it off, no.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yeah. Thank you so much, thank you so much, thank you so much. Yes, Ikom. I'm expecting Ikom, we have their hometown home meeting within this month. Uh, we will still to check their list within this month. We will see, Ikom flyers will be. Cicating. Uh, I, uh. Encourage everyone to invite everybody. By the special grace of God. That should be the first moment. Having the. So thank you so much, thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Staki, Staki, over to you, please unmute.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. Our able APM. On the DRI AT of. The African Public Domain Tonight, I welcome the people. On behalf of my family. I'm welcoming APM's ten thousand edge. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, please, can we sing for?
Minister, uh, Abigail, come on. Akamarama Kai gakoro, when I walk eh.
Dalon.
Dalon. Dalon, because. You can, you can.
Remind me, give me a, a, a.
Ten thousand edge.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Dalon.
Okay. Thank you so much, we will continue moving forward and making a good progress. Uh. Yes, ask me, alright, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Alright, thank, thank you, sir. And greetings to all the honourables in the house.
Welcome.
Greetings, Bishop. There were.
Okay. Sing that one. No, she's not here yet.
Okay, thank you so much, uh, my Minister of Information. So we call Apollo Dove, Dove, over to you. Dove, unmute yourself, over to you. Dove, can you hear us?
Is you that will unmute the person before the person comes in?
No, it's not muted, though. Eh, okay.
But the man who.
Medama.
Medama, they were.
My voice is down.
Zidov. The financial director of Mabu State. Um, I can dance. Mbedama no munebo.
Dalon.
After no, eh, kunobo, ma Zidov. The financial director of Mabu State.
Okay.
Ekenegansika mmbunye our A P M. And ah, Ma Zesonya Barawa, ekenegande, you know, Nando Zonine. Ona wa nae wa wa, wa wunde nonoso. So, na, uh, we, uh, we, we are Amutia, we, we, we are Wososo, ekenegansika, ekeni. Na, wa wunde, ngoswa ra bede na tualeka obu. So, and ah, na bede kano, no Dallo, no. Man de de tonyo bo, no mbi de de Diego. Eh, ne, ne, we nae yo no do, o ni si ke, aywa hapro ba, eh, ba, ba fununu. Oso aywa na, ba, la, 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 ife na ni, ni bazu. Ka tuwa Biafra ma kana, eh, eh, ife, eh, yo, Bia ngerebo, aywa ta chala, eh, ba, cha, oso ni na ni bazu. Eh, we ta ngelo, eh, man obu ne, we ta ngelo, eh, funa, na, na, oso ni na aywa, na na, eh, ni, na ndua aywa, eh, na na, eh, ni.
Thank you.
You have noticed your hand up, Omuchia, sir, please, please, please. Okay, welcome, uh, thank you so much, dear sister, for this wonderful things. And they love him, we bless you. With all, uh, Samsung, over to you, Samsung S M. Yeah. Um, six five F, over to you. Samsung, over to you. Oh, without waste of time, we call, uh, I card the number, I card the number, over to you.
Call the number.
The number, over to you.
Hey, I'm gonna offer this, hey. 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 Wow. Hey. Good number, good number. Number, let me, come, tell me.
You are having a natural. Damn, you're having it.
Am I coming out?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Good number means, let what you have solve your problem. What you have, that thing that is natural giving in your land. You use it to solve your problem before you looking outside. Don't am bad, you have to wait for outside, that is. When you are, but it means you are creating the, the door that created you and brought you into that, that particular area. So use what you have to solve your problem. That is meaningful good number. So, um, my little group has, that said they are about forty states, I thank you. You know, my point, that when you speak something that supports it, that's who I am, okay? Yes, so, said this very, uh, important. Uh, always, I always represent, maybe states, where I come from, great. Yes, and the. I want to officially represent of the maybe states with ten thousand Ajem, sixty thousand Ajem altogether, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Please, can we say to them?
Thank you, number. So.
Thank you so much, good number, thank you so much. Yes, uh, really appreciate, uh, all of us, so we call upon, uh, UK admin over to you.
Mm hmm.
Ada.
Okay. Alright, um. Let me start with the, the man that, his name is Dove. Yeah, you know, during, uh, December, when this woman struck, and we were, um, let, well, let me, let me not just admonish the people, yeah, but. Um, I believe people have learned their lessons, yeah, and we pray for, uh, the safety of the people that, uh, or are poorly deceived. And to God be my peace, protect of you. Whenever you are, alright, um, I want to dedicate my fifty Ajemma to you. Please, I thank, uh, my sister. That brought this, brought this idea very, very, very good. Yeah.
Happy girl.
Happy girl, yeah, I was thinking, happy girl, I. Sister, happy girl, yes, please, we'll be doing the other one with you for US. Yeah, except of that day, yeah, I would have, uh, contributed a lot, alright. Also, my damn, my fifty Ajemma goes to state of Afemi Igudemi Igudo. Yes, so, and then I want to support, uh, I want to, uh, put five Ajemma again to state of Isan Igudemi Igudo. I want to put another five to, uh, where is it? Yes, there's Isan Igudemi Igudo, there's state of Iden Igudemi Igudo. And then, another five Ajemma to state of Kwa. Hmm, then another five to state of Obuya. We have lots of states, honestly, so Igud, Isan Igudemi Igudo. Iden Igudemi Igudo, state of Kwa, and state of Obuya, that is, uh, twenty Ajemma. Thank you so much.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, thank you, thank you. I am telling you, something will change from next one, next one, we will change.
Thank you so much, thank you so much, uh, Ada, for this, uh, a great move, uh, yes. We have forty states. And, um, by the special grace of God, best ones we are seeing here. Every state, we are going to be revoking all the spirit of every state, like the state you mentioned now. Some of us that is here now don't know that have such states, like a West state, starting at, starting Atlanta state. Uh, Isan state, uh, Igbo state, Igbo state. So all those states we are going to be doing one by one, come on rest of them. And I believe that, uh, this move that we are making here now, uh, all those states that you mentioned now, they are going to have their town hall meeting. And that is the reason why we're encouraging and advise, uh, every citizen of every state, that you should, um. Uh, put it to notice or tax to your state admin, that you should have, uh, this town hall meeting, it's a part of awareness. Uh, but some people don't understand that, but I believe that, uh, things is going to change well. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, and may Lord him, uh, protect and heal all of us, so. Now, uh, we call, uh. Briggy, over to you. Sorry, sorry, it's not Briggy. Kissman, Kissman, you raise your hand up again.
Yeah, it's great, yeah. Uh, good evening, everyone, um, on behalf of, uh, all those states, uh, that here, I've sent the receipt to, um. Uh, one of our sisters, thank you. Thank you.
Uh, okay.
Thank you so much.
One more person. Briggy N Y.
Okay, sorry.
Ndewo. Ah, Beni, Ndewo no. Ndewo.
Ndewo.
Uh, hmm. I think when, uh, U, Uyo, Uyo, is that a state? No.
So, Oyo, Oyo.
Uyo.
Oyo.
It's not a state. O- okay, Uyo, no, which state? I'm awkward.
Uh, Oyo should, uh, you, it is on them, uh. I was not coming to tell you, I think it's wrong.
Okay, alright. Okay, alright, um, ten Ajemma for Idangibom. Ten Ajemma for Ikume Esia. Ten Ajemma to support Oha Bueni. That's that Ajemma, now, who do I send the receipt to? Okay, it's done, yeah, done, alright. So the total is how much? Thirty Ajemma. Thank you, sister love. Thank you, Ndewo, for representing these other states. I know the spirit of God will move massively to go and touch all of them wherever they are in diaspora. Because that is support their people. Amen. We still have fans up, oh.
Okay, sorry, sorry, we call, um, Regia Frey, Regia Frey, over to you.
Um, Udayo watching A K.
Hey, what is?
There was. Yes, I might, I might. Thank you very much, um. Ebyafra, Manu Wado. All the name, all the. Wado. Yes, so, I greet all the honorable cabinet members of the G R G I E, that are here present. Greetings to you, our beloved A P M, and I'm using you as a point of contact to send our greeting from Uroubo. It's so good to all our leaders, from the time of, uh, Deepo Jukwu to this representative. Thank you very much for all that you do, great dear friends that are here gathered. My profound greeting goes to you, especially our mothers, our women, our fighting, donating, speaking, doing all it takes to see that. This freedom becomes a reality, thank you so, so very much. Uh, on this very day, I want to support this, uh, fundraising of Oha Bueni State, with the sum of, uh, three thousand Aj. And, uh, I want to also let our people know that, this three thousand Aj may be lifted, uh, to go a long way to pro- to protect a child. To protect a baby, to protect a woman, a little girl, a little girl that ought to be raped by the Nigeria sponsored terrorist in Biafra land. So, I need all of you to come out and support the defense of our land, to support the recognition of Biafra land. And having said that, I will also do a song in my language, uh, to seal it up. Kavzama rehohoze, re ma bugo ra we Biafra imoni. Kavzama rehohoze, re ma bugo ra woge me. Akavzama rehohoze, re ma bugo ra we Biafra imoni me. Kavzama rehohoze, re ma bugo ra woge me. Kavzama rehohoze yo, re ma bugo ra we Biafra imoni. Kavzama rehohoze, re ma bugo ra woge me. Uge me Biafra, ugo, ugo. Or ra woge me, ugo, ugo. Uge me Biafra, ugo, ugo. Or ra woge me, ugo, ugo. City of Biafra, ugo, ugo. The city of God, ugo, ugo. City of Biafra, ugo, ugo. The nation of God, ugo, ugo. City of Biafra, ugo, ugo. The city of God, ugo, ugo, ugo. Thank you very much, I am the mic, my name is Regia Fury, AKA Udayo watching A K.
This guy will sing for, for him.
Akamarama. Great for Jan Fury. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, thank you so much, because no, my, my, and dim no one corner, we're not no Loure and Fury. That no Loure, that's my, again, I send that, eh, joke, when, uh, song, Greg, who no, eh, what? Eh, give me, I'm with you, Kimi, because, Regia Fury. Dim see I had the twenty Ajemma, where I support, who look in, I become. Give you, give, ta, 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 ma, na, na, me, Larry, how big a J, who more look at? Give him, give him like, man, thank you so much. Twenty Ajemma for this voice. Akamarama kaiga koro, dia bigel. Akamarama. Thank you so much. Biga, let fall, let it rain, let it rain.
Thank you so much, so much, uh, my beloved, thank you, our dear brother, for the gift of song that our Lord him gave to you. Lord bless you. So we call, um, uh, Brigets Owasomba, Brigets C Owasomba, over to you.
Hello, dear friend, good evening.
Good evening.
From here, Arabu, Arabueni. Ndewo no.
Ndewo.
Okay, women no. Am I maybe would, I'm not, you, who was, say, maybe what I been here, maybe, no, where do they sit where that? Or where are they sit where that, I don't know, from the map.
In, in old, in the good states.
Oh, okay, alright, thank you. I will. You know, not spending much time. I don't know how to mention everybody's name here, but my greetings to everybody. And honor to, towards the honoreables and ministers, ministers and everything. So, um, I'm trying to support the Arabueni people. For hearing, dealing for the first time, supporting from where I stay, which I am. Um, I want to give them thirty dollars, which is a thirty Ajemma for the orgy. And thank you very much, and welcoming, um, A P M too. Saying A P M, wish you. Um. I, I wish you safe journey.
Yeah.
While going back to Maryland, it's a long, it's a long trip. So have, have a safe trip on your way going, may God bless you in Jesus's name.
Yes. Please, though. My sister, you know, they said that, you know, who thought you give a.
I said I supported Oware, my estate, I didn't wear a logi. I said, I.
Time to be good.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, sister, pastor, hmm, comfort, God bless you.
Darine.
Sister Bigel, thank you and God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sister Bridget. Next, uh, next, next Sunday, we will, we will hosting a A P M, won't we? Again, me ga mana.
Oh, Ninkai.
Eh, Ndewo gani.
Ah, okay, thank you.
Eh, me the self, eh, me the self, I know, I know, group, I, 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 group, I.
Little can, we have answered our name, you know, pick the color not. The next agenda is here is to support or having a little way you can. Support them, the little can. Miss of information. Yes. The next item we have here is general support. To everybody to answer, he saw her name here. Then I give my to A P M to address or have been. Thank you.
Very big thank you to everyone that have turned up to this very town meeting. We have just started and we see a few hours ago, we have a video channel, video channel over to you. Me yourself.
Okay, everybody.
There were.
Hello.
No, no.
No. They work. That no, that no. Yeah, can I support on the, can they be at the top, I know I'm on a, on a.
Any, yes.
I have any.
Yes.
So, yes, I had a woman from the, the good. Uh, don't know, I really wouldn't decide doggo, I said, I did. Is that go who decide, uh huh. So, but I want for, I want, I want. Oh, yeah, wanna.
Or have been hidden outside the, who's who, who's who, Benway, who's who, Kogi.
Okay, so okay, that's side, okay, okay. But we are in, uh, two thousand and eight. I will pay with the. That can be propaganda. And what I go, go without brutal confusion. Also, no, that is because of the base, say, nah. Two tools of guru command their men, come along, not just go away. You understand, because it's a confusion, so, nah, send the by. Oh, yeah, but I make this one, oh, yeah, but I can understand, man. Sending them to go and attack tools, and the way to the tools or, uh, uh, the, this, this made them, you come to social media, branding. Uh, uh, anything happens to them, that the whole boots are responsible. Uh, so, that's what I say, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And let me use this opportunity to address that, please, let's sing, let's sing for him, then I'll address that madness of, of a popular.
Akamarama kaiga korona ede. Ah. The other one, the Lord will keep you safe. I don't know, I'm saying, it's about there.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Um, I will be looking for the video clip where. Gaze your away, see another drama and, uh, what is the other one, um, Agi or Papa? Uh huh, that, that Papa, yellow Papa. Where the three of, yeah, where the three of them were having a discussion of, uh, if, uh. Biafra Defense Forces generals over from one boundary to another. Yaya Jugo. Yaya Jugo, mm hmm. So, we'll be looking for that, so that will be what we use. So, he has tried. He has tried the same part of the, the. In many ways, and she will be setting out, and he has, and she doesn't succeed, and then she expect them. The Biafra Defense Forces to treat the enemies that they have with kid gloves. So. She doesn't have anything to do with Biafra Defense Forces. The people she recruited are Ebo Bago, Caterpillar, Sapele, so she has to focus and concentrate with those people which she gave her fifty million naira. Which they ran away and another man came out and was crying. How they had to deal with, uh. Caterpillar and Sapele, and now he has run away with the money without delivering, so she should go and focus with them. She has on several locations posted that Biafra Defense Forces are criminals, kidnappers, this and that, and scat strangers. Last week, she made a post that all Biafran should disregard anything coming from the Biafra Defense Forces headquarters Twitter handle. That they are criminals, uh huh. So now, what do you now have to do with the people that you say are criminals? Why are you coming to drag their name to the mud today? So Biafran should understand that Gaze your away, see has nothing to do with Biafra Defense Forces. She has tried to destroy their names, their reputation and their work, but she cannot succeed, and that is. The next thing that has been given to her to come and do now is to come and play that emotional blackmail. To come and play that last card, drag their names out and say they are doing this and doing that. What is different from what she's saying now to what Remid you said? You're telling us that Biafra Defense Forces are kidnapping people and locking people up and doing that, you are very stupid, so. Wherever you see this nonsense coming from her, understand that she's still playing the card of finding a way to destroy the effort of Biafra Defense Forces. Since those ones have refused to bow down to her and to have anything to do with her. This is the same thing that will also be happening to the second accountability group very soon. Very soon, you will see them coming to cry when they have tried so hard to break through Biafra Defense Forces and they cannot, they will coming out to also cry and start calling Biafran's names. So, no one should take this nonsense they are saying to anywhere. You can see Nigerian terrorist government are writing, uh, memo and putting the names and faces of Biafra Defense Forces generals. They put the face of General Jento, they put the face of, uh, General Makeup and say they are, they are looking for them. They also did the same thing, putting the face of, uh, our Prime Minister and say they are looking for them. Putting out the phone number and say who will bring them, have a, 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 a money to collect for the compensation. And then you are announcing Gaze your away, see, doing the same thing, so what is different? That's just for you to understand that she's working on Nigeria and she's rolling the same template out. So every Biafran should understand this and disregard any nonsense coming from her. You can't come out to be dishing out orders to a team, organization, or an entity, or a government which you don't belong. So go and continue to give your orders and instructions to your Ebo Bago group. Because you have nothing to do with the Biafra Defense Forces. And without wasting time and with joy and happiness and all appreciation in our hearts, I hereby present to the Biafran people. The indomitable, the talking adu, the noo, the stone cool, the man that they have tried to bring down. The man that is destroying Nigeria in Washington DC. The man that has become a nightmare to the enemies of BRGI, the enemy of BDF, His Excellency. The man that his smile brings venom. Honorable Okajuku Mungere, I present to you, to the Biafran people, welcome to Awabweini State, there was.
There were, thank you. Thank you, Honorable Minister of Information. Without you, I don't know. Uh, what could have happened to we Biafrans? You are a blessing to us, uh, we appreciate you. We appreciate your integrity. We appreciate everything you are doing for us. On behalf of Biafran people, I say, thank you, there. And, uh, just as our tradition goes. We always gonna remember those before us. Our leader Ojuku. Accompanied by. His Excellency Philip Ephio. We remember them. We appreciate them. We can never, never, never. Forget about them. We can never forget about talking about everything they have done for us. The save of our life. Because without their initiative. Without them opening our eyes. For us to know the reason why we need to fight for our freedom. I don't know where we're going to be. So we appreciate them, say thank you. We appreciate them. Deep down in our heart. Those that know what they did. And what they stand for or stood for. Say, thank you. And what about our leader Mazinamdekan? Mazinamdekan. Once, uh, worked with a man called Wasrike. But when he found out, uh, the activity of Wasrike. And how Wasrike. Uh, is piloting the affair of the freedom of Biafran people. This is a prophet. This is a man that smell something miles away. He see before anyone does. He realized and he went on that Wasrike. Is going to betray, I was through that. And that is only what happened. And he decide to carry the mountain. The mantle. To do the needful. And what is the needful? The same fighting for freedom. The same thing that our leader Dume Wujuku and Philip Ephio. Have done before. He pick it up. He keep pushing, pushing. Start from radio Biafran. He enlightened a lot of people, waking up Biafran people. He speak in the language Biafran people understand. That is the language of freedom. The language, the reason why we need to be free. And he let Biafran people know. He said they are coming. And Biafran people keep asking, who are coming? He keep. He say, ask, we don't see anyone yet coming, who, what are you talking about, our leader Mazinamdekan? He keep repeating it, they are coming. And who are these people? The jihadis, terrorists that have colluded. With the Nigerian terrorist states. Our leader Mazinamdekan foresaw this. And he keep shouting. Till a time, he said, he's tired of shouting and pressing. Those are people. We are smart, we are good people, we are also stubborn people. I heard that name, we are very, very stubborn. Yes, that's who we are, we are republican in nature. We like to debate, argue, we wanna see it so we can believe. I don't know where Thomas from the. He said they are coming. And they have finally arrived Biafran land. We see everything that is happening in Biafran land. To the extent, even level, one of our own BDF commander. That what is happening in Arrow is Arrow, they is all. That he is the one, because now the man. That is a fantastically lie from P to L. Everything that is happening in Biafran today. Is something that you already preplanned. It's agenda of old Madame Fodio. They already planning. How they will execute it? How they will come to our community? Destroy our community. Chase us out of our land. How they will make brothers? And sisters to hate themselves? How do we turn Biafrans against Biafrans? And it's happening. In our very own eyes. This is not the making of Biafran people. It's something that's already been planned. Decade before somebody like me was actually born. This is what our leader Mazinamdekan keep shouting about. They are coming. The terrorist jihadis. Islamic bloodsucking demos are coming to overrun and take over our land. When the Nigerian terrorist state find out that this man is right. So. They do everything possible to kidnap him from K. So they can do what? Shut up. Because the exposition was too much. Even our, I'll call them our sister country, the Dudua Republic. Some of them are there and they still asking question, they say, what is this man talking about? Is he sure what he's talking about? What is he pressing about? But what is happening today? He affect the entire nation. All the four corner. Of that contraption country called Zulu Nigeria. There is chaos everywhere. There is fire on the mountain. My fellow citizen. Why this fire is burning? Are we not going to quench the fire that is born in Biafran land? We have to. If not, just like Tanjuma said. We all die if we don't quench the fire. And how do we do that? We have to fight back. Why our leader Mazinamdekan was kidnapped? He already paved the way and talked to the Biafran people in the language we understand. He said they should go and listen to his son or follow his son. His Excellency Mazie Simonawa. Why our leader Mazinamdekan was kidnapped from K? Our Prime Minister Mazie Simonawa, pick it up from him. Keep fighting. Keep doing everything he can. So that our land will not be overrun. He start by exposing the Nigerian terrorist states. That is why I always call him. The exposé one of Biafran land. He exposed Nigerian stage for years. Not one, not two, not three. And he spent hours, one, two, three hours. Exposing the Nigerian atrocity against the Biafran people. To extend the Biafran people fall in love with his exposition, and we are all addicted to it. Every day, any day that he did not appear. We keep asking question, what happened, okay or not? Just for Biafran not to be free. The Nigerian state colluded again with EU, the European Union. To shut the mouth of our Prime Minister. To stop exposing Biafran, uh, Nigeria. And to stop fighting for Biafran. They call him for so-called worship. We are waiting. Next moment is fast approaching. In just a few weeks. We expect his release. Finland better do what is right. No one have monopoly of violence. All four corner of the earth or the world. Believe in. Higher being, believe in God, believe in the unseen power. Him who create the universe, Sukukka Abian. He created the Biafran people. Not to be perish. But to inhabit, live, dwell in Biafran land, not in Odudua land. Not in Jamaica land. Not in Abuja land. But in Calabar land. In the Hiamuf land. In the Cala. In Uvri land. In Sappel land. In Uvri land. In the Cool land, in the Ovland. In Indonesia land. In a rebel land. In in the air we land. In nowhere we land. In Omahe land. That is our land. In Uvri land. This is all land of Biafran. That Koki Kaabbiama said, this is where you will dwell. And inhabit it. So what is happening today? Is a plan deal. From the old Madame Fodio agenda. To chase us out of this beautiful. Land that is flowing with milk and honey. My fellow citizens. Are we going to allow these people chase us out of our land? People of Haame or Haabweini. Thank you all that you have stood to make sure. Does this terrorist will not overrun our land? All the executive of Haabbe, we appreciate you. The de facto government. And the Biafran Republic government as well. We appreciate every minister, admin and rep, all pioneers of this great course. Thank you all. We will keep fighting for our freedom. But sometime it breaks my heart and I believe yours too. Why are we not waking up to face this reality? We are few number fighting for this record. There is this saying that goes, that it takes few to liberate a country or a nation. It's not easy. The journey is not easy. But we will keep fighting. We will keep fighting. We'll keep doing our best. And we also want to remind us. That we live in a world. That either you free or you are a slave. And these people that have come to take over our land from us. We know their history. We need know their story. We are not fighting against any religion. There is bunch of religions all over the world, or many other religions or domination, whatever you call it. We have the Hindus. We have the Buddhists. And others. Never a time in Biafran history that we are kicking against the Buddhists or the Hindus. But we are kicking against the Islamic jihadist terrorists. That have come to chase us from our land. That have come to take over our land. And the Nigerian terrorist state that have been there. Colluded with them. They are our enemies. We know their history. Let me use Iran as a case study today. A lot of people are not familiar with Iran. Iran. Their Persian, uh, Persian empire. Once upon a time, used to be a great empire. We all read some story or books about the king of Persian. Even in Bible, he speak loud and talk more about Persian empire. Why they not call Persians again? Because of the same way. These people that have come to take over our land, chase us out of our land, Islamize us. That is what happened to Iran. Name is not Iran, is Persian. Very great empire at the time. A lot of people don't know that the leaders of Iran today, Ayatollah is not from Iran. He's from Lebanon. Ayatollah is from Lebanon. The leaders of Iran today, they are not from Iran. Just like the same way Chetima and all these Fulanis are from that contraption called Nigeria. Yes. And what happened in their own case studying? When these jihadis stormed. The Persian empire, they slaughtered them. Killed them, overrun their land, take over their land. And that's what come about the name change. Over sixty, seventy, eighty years ago. Majority of Iran. They are Christians. And that is the fact. So why I'm using Iran as a case study, so that we will know that. If we don't fight back, what happened to the Persian people will happen to us. And look at today. They have changed the Persian people against their will. Majority of them don't like to wear their jihad, jihad or whatever. Majority of them don't align with the lifestyle that they have brought upon them. Majority of them want to be free. They want to live a normal life. They want to live according to their culture and way of life. But if we look at what is happening in Iran, Iran today. The people of Iran have found themselves in a deep shit hole. Do you know that thousands of Iranians are converting every day back to Christianity? Every day. Because they want to go back to their normal way of life. They don't love that lifestyle that invaders that have come to conquer their land. They don't love the lifestyle that they are living today. The dictatorship of the current regime is not what they pretty wish for. So if we Biafrans are not careful. These jihadis terrorists. They will come and kill us or take over our land, or we will all convert. Today, they are Islamist. Religion. The question is that, do we want to live a normal life? Or wanna live a life that will be embodied? And for our mothers, our sisters. Do you prefer to live the same lifestyle of the Iranian? Our mothers that like to do their hair well done, put on this nice jewelry, earrings. Do your makeup, you will be looking like a queen that just, uh. Just. Just appear from heaven. Do you want these people to come and change your lifestyle? Then you start wearing something that you don't know? So we have to be careful. We have to really know the reason why we are fighting so we will not be Islamized. Like Iran, I'm using as case study today. Thousands are fighting against invaders, against those that have come to change their culture, their religion, who they are. They are fighting. I came across a video yesterday that talk about how in Iran today, they have a lot of underground churches. They are fed up with the system. They are fed up with what Ayatollah brought to Iran. They want to go back to who they are. So we Biafrans, we don't allow these terrorists to come and overrun and take over our land. And later on, we start fighting again. So we want to fight this fight once and for all. All the enemies of Biafrans, enemy within and enemy outside will fight you on. It's a promise. And my fellow citizens, please, if you identify these people, you know how to deal with them, do it in your own way. But if you don't, or if you can, support your BDF. Support those that are fighting for you. Because the fight they are fighting for you is just and pure. Those that are fighting this fight, it's for us to be free. It's for us not to live in bondage. When our leader Mazinamdeka was shouting, preaching, prophesying that these people are coming. Some are laughing, just like in the days of Noah. When Noah was preaching about his flood, some like they have not seen something like that happen. How is it going to happen? It can never be. And eventually it happened. What about Sudamangomor? When they were being preached to stop their evil way. Some must say stop them. But what happened later happened. And Sudamangomor was destroyed. My fellow Biafrans, it's time that we all take a deep breath and ask question. If what we are doing is not real, why do you think the Nigerian terrorist state kidnapped our leader Mazinamdeka? Why do you think the bride who was wicked and paid him off to stop agitating for freedom? If what we are doing is not true, why do you think the Nigerian terrorist state colluded in you? Colluded to stop our freedom? If you think that Nigerian terrorists country love you, why didn't them provide basic amenities for you? Why did the Nigerian terrorist state provide work in Biafran? There is no Nigerian government president in Biafran. No job. All the seed pods, they make sure it don't work. Exactly the same thing that is happening in Iran today. Do you know that Iran is actually the number three deterrent in the world in producing gas or oil? But do you know that the same Iran import oil, the same that is happening in Nigeria? What a coincidence there. Because anywhere, any country, these jihadis terrorists rule or operate or govern, nothing goes well there. Always a problem. Iran that are supposed to be exporting, they import oil. Because all their refinery don't work. Let me ask you a question. How many refinery work in that contraption called Nigeria? Nigeria actually buy oil from United States fabric. Eh, is that not funny? Nigeria buy oil, they import oil. They sell the crude because since they cannot, or their refinery, it's not working. They sell the crude and they will now buy it from wherever they sell it again. So the same playbook what happened in Iran is what is happening in that country called Nigeria. Shetima, the co-founder of Boko Haram, is not from that, the same country called Nigeria. Over ninety percent of the leaders that have ruled that country, they are not even like this. The leaders that have destroyed Iran, they are not from Iran. And these leaders that have destroyed Iran are the ones sponsoring all these jihadist terrorists. Hezbollah, Houthis from Yemen, Boko Haram, ISIS, Qaeda. They are all sponsored by Iran, all their products. To achieve what? To destroy us and Islamize us. It's time that we all fight back. We know the journey is not easy. But we keep on. We have gone so far. I came across a video that that captioned that our prime minister is not happy with the online media saga. And the fool that posted that was doing that program. He is the one destroying the same government that our prime minister have built. Are we going to let these people that have come to destroy our society? One thing I know for sure. One karma is ruined. Number two. If you saw, you would see, that's what we reap. All these subvers, all these evil people. Time of reckoning is coming. Time of judgment is coming. They will pay one way or the other. The best thing for them to do now is to business from their evil way. And for all those that are parading themselves in Biafran land, saying they are governors, they are illegitimate governors. Biafran is already declared, they are liberating our land. Anywhere you come across these people, if you have what it takes to pay them back, the evil that they have brought upon us. If you have what it takes, if you can do it, go ahead and do it. But if you remember, we have our EDF. All the E ways in Biafran territory or Biafran land. Any E way you identify as sub, treat that E way as sub. Any community leader you identify as a betrayer, treat that person as our enemy. Deal with that person. Nobody, no one has monopoly of ours. Him who come before he get to you, you know what to do. If not, that person or whoever it is will take your life. And it's heartbreaking that so many Biafrans are living in bondage and they don't want what we are doing. I don't know until when they will learn. The people who are supporting, they have killed a family member in thousands and millions. And for those that still believe in that country called Nigeria for over hundred years, what have Nigeria done for you? What have you benefited from Nigeria? Next. Is it a good school system? Do you know Nigerian school system is scam? It's full of bribery and corruption. Just the same way we have all these professors and doctors that probably did not even, maybe they buy their way out. It's full of corruption and bribery. No good healthcare system. No good roads. When I went for the hearing where Nigeria was designated as a country of Petula, Consign or country that basically Christian. There is one of the speaker. He said that Nigeria have the worst road on earth. He said white man, yeah, it's not even in Nigeria saying it. And he said he have been in Nigeria several times. Said Nigeria have the worst road on earth. Is it not a shame? Is that country that some of you that never want to support Biafran, want to be proud of? A country that after your children finish their education, they can find a job. A country that some in this twenty first century, some have a two square meter. A country that all the war leadership, what they do is to loot. Loot the money they supposed to use to take care of the citizens. Nigeria is a feast it. If I have opportunity, if I have what it takes, I will burn Nigeria. Take me one second. And I don't care whoever live inside that country. If they decide, if they decide to stay, stay back without leaving, I will burn everything down. God that created you. Never have done it before. I'm a Christian, I believe in those that don't believe. I believe in the flood of Noah. I believe what was recorded about Sudamangomor. I believe in all this. God have done it before. If I have what it takes, I will burn down Nigeria, burn everything. Then God started a new, a new Biafran, a new life, a new world, whatever. Instead of living in bondage. It's heartbreaking that so many Biafrans and the African terrorist states, they thought they can conduct election in Biafran. While you see some Biafrans. For someone. It's an illegitimate governors just want to give them peanuts, give them a dime for them to support them, support them. And you see so many Biafrans that have been misled, still believing in the Nigerian system. Not because they do. It's because of the abject poverty. Because they are so poor that any money that they can get, whether it's a dime. So they can use that money, get whatever they want to get for that moment. People live daily. They live in the moment, whatever you can give them to survive that very day. Because of the poverty. Back to Iran as case study. Everything I'm saying now is what is happening in Iran today. Iran regime, they have put the people of Iran in abject, abject poverty. The masses in Iran don't have seen. The government have frustrated the citizens of Iran. One dollar is to eight thousand something or eighty something thousand of Iranian money. What a shame. And that is where the zoo is pushing to to. We will not allow that to happen to us. It's high time we begin to reclaim who we are. We are God fearing people. We are people that align ourselves with the West. Whether you like it or not. Some might say, why do we Biafrans align ourselves with the West? It's all about ideology. It's all about what we have in common, way of life. We don't hate the West. We like education, we love education, we love innovation. We love culture. We need to start asking ourselves serious question. If we want to allow these terrorist jihadis that have come to slaughter us, chase us out of our land, to overrun Biafran. What I'm saying now happened in Iran, do your research. There is a crusade that was carried out in Iran. Where they slaughtered the people of Iran. Islamizing, change Iran culture from who they are. My fellow citizens, people of Habwehni, people of Biafran, are we going to allow that to happen? We are talking about our generation. We are talking about who we are as people. We saw the news that was trending this week. United States of America, can you imagine warning United States of America citizens to disease or not to travel to some part of Nigeria, including, I'll just use that word, Nigeria. The reason why? Because of kidnapping. Because of terrorism. They made it clear that Nigeria don't even have a good healthcare system. Is it not a shame? For a country of over two hundred million people. A country that its GDP is A country that its GDP is probably one or the second in Africa. They can't even provide the basic amenities for their citizen. It's high time we all embrace this freedom. Freedom is not given, it's taken. And it's good to be free. And for those that want to live in bondage like Andy Okeke. Hope those are them my OT. So they can relocate, leave Biafran land alone. If I have opportunity. We can lay our hand on these people I mentioned. One second they gone, they are evil. And all the aranases. Bringing this evil, abetting, abetting these terrorists, bringing them to Biafran, all of them. We'll lay our hand on all of them one after another. It's not a threat, it's a promise. Because you can bring. These people to kill us and you will walk free or you will go free. I don't want to blame the people of Biafran. And I'm not going to say we are not doing enough. But we know what is right to do. Everyone is encouraged to support this freedom. Fund your freedom, freedom is not given, it's taken. And I also want to use this opportunity to let Biafran people know that we have more great news coming from Washington DC. Whatever we make public, we make public. Whatever we will not make public, won't be in public domain. Biafran is here. Let all just keep our eyes on the ball. It's time we come and fight together as Biafrans. It's time we unite, we unite with genuity, truthfulness. If you are Sabo, repent! Once upon a time. Apostle Peter used to be a sabotwa. And Apostle Peter repents. Apostle Peter. Used to be a sabotwa, used to kill Christians, but he repents. If you are an evil person, you're a sabotwa, kindly repent. If not. You know what will happen to you. I just wanna appreciate everyone that have been supporting financially. Keep doing what you are doing. Biafran is here, our leader Mazin Namdekan will be so proud of all of us. When he comes out, because they cannot hold him forever. Our leader, our Prime Minister will soon be out, we pray they will let, release him by next month. First week of next month. We believe he will be out. And when he is out, he will be proud of us. And for all the sabos, all the evil ones, those that try to bring me down, if you think you bring me down. We are fighting against the Biafran people. And all the evil ones, the land of Biafran will swallow you. And the clergyman in Biafran land. Disease from your evil way. Teach the congregation the reason why they should fight for their freedom. In Iran, about sixty, seventy, eighty years ago. They are Christian, but today, over ninety percent are Muslim. Not just Muslims, some have been radicalized. To be extremist, jihadis. Those that would just go killing people shouting Allah Kubak. Just killing, believing by killing infidel, they call themselves infidel, that God will accept them. If you one of those men of God from Biafran lands, you are not doing the right thing. You are a man of Satan, you are not a man of God. You deserve to be stoned. Because some of you have deceived the congregation, some of you have deceived the Biafran people. From not knowing how to fight for what belong to them, or how to fight for their survival. It's all about survival we're talking about. And the need for us. And the need for us to have a Biafran that will compete with the rest of the world. That we have a well structured system, Biafran will have this steady light, good healthcare, good school. A Biafran. That we, the government will be able to provide jobs for our citizens. A Biafran. That would be like the rest of the world. When I say the rest of the world, we're talking about country like United States of America. China, Dubai. Because Singapore, Hong Kong. We want to compete. Thank you fellow Biafrans, thank you all that have been supporting, we appreciate everyone. Please, and we also need to protect our BDF, those that are laboring them. Laying false accusation on them, please don't listen to such individual. They are Sabo. Those that have come to destroy what we are doing, please don't listen to them. We know who we are, if you're doing the right thing, you know what you are doing. And for the evil ones. You will not win this fight. Please keep supporting. The Biafran Defense Force, they are doing what is right. And for those that have. Go astray, please. Instead of disrupting or trying to destroy what we are doing, you better remain silent. Let us bring this Biafran. Let us fight this fight for you. Then after that, you can come in and enjoy Biafran. And enjoy the foot of Biafran. But if you decide to destroy or to sabotage what we are doing, we'll come after you. I keep saying, if I have what it takes, I will destroy all of you in a second. One second, I will not spare anyone. Because you people are evil, those that have colluded. With the enemies to fight Biafran people. I'm so happy for the past two weeks, I have joy in my heart seeing what is coming from Washington DC. More is still coming, more is still unfolding, every day we are getting green light from Washington. From America to step up and keep doing what they are doing is not coincidence. It's because of our activity, my activity, your activity, all of our activities, not just me. And for those that are saying, you make it happen, I didn't make it happen, we are making it happen. One person cannot do it alone. Our leader Mazin Namdekan alone cannot give us Biafran. Our Prime Minister Mazin Simon Eba alone cannot give us Biafran. Mazio Gichu here alone cannot give us Biafran. It's all of us that can do us Biafran. It's a collective effort, a collective division of level. So if you know what you are doing, if you are in the media team, propagate the gospel truth of Biafran. Do what is right. If you part of those that are supporting financially, do what is right, it's division of level. Thank you all from here and please don't forget, Biafran is here. Your support is needed, with your support, we can go as far as we can. With your support, a journey of a hundred day, we can make it one or ten days. And please stop fighting with our men on ground, our BDF. Stop fighting those that are pioneering this great cause. Stop fighting against the new media of Biafran people. It break my heart when I see some of these people that are fighting against those that have. Dedicated. Devote all their time to fight for freedom. Break my heart that that's what it is. Sometime, whatever these sabotwas are doing, actually shaping the movement. Actually make some of us to go extra mile. But all these sabotwas, they all must be held accountable. So it's best for all these sabotwas to repent. So that we can. Get our total freedom now, tomorrow, sooner than we ever think. With that, we can make Biafran better again, great again. So we can coexist with country. That want to align themselves with the Biafran people, who do business with every country from the world as long as. That country not come to rip us off. Or destroy us, we welcome that country, align with you. And do what is right. Thank you from here, uh, thank you all. Please, I'm pleading with everyone, support from the bottom of your heart with a gemma. We are not hiding financially. We have our lobbies that are doing the great work in Washington, we have our lawyers. All this require money, money. It require more, even here United States of America, whenever America engaging war of fighting for freedom. Do you know people that sponsor that war? Is the masses, they increase us. If you used to pay ten percent us, you pay twelve percent. You think is the federal government that is sponsoring the war, supply is the citizens. If you used to buy bread from two dollars, that bread will be two dollar fifty cent. That fifty cent is for your support of that war. So nothing wrong for Biafran people to support their freedom financially. Thank you from here.
Thank you our APM, we're going to sing. Thank you our APM for this on the.
Our citizens from homeland, uh, Abi. Do you all know that a great man called Marco Rubio? The article he wrote few days ago slamming the EU about their double standard. Do you all know he mentioned Biafran and Ambarzoun? He mentioned Biafran. Because there's some country from Europe trying to recognize the Palestinian state. And he also remind them, what about Biafran? And these countries are trying to recognize Palestinian state, one of them. Is a no country than. Britain. Britain that don't want to let us go. That they want to recognize Palestinian state. Britain, then let Biafran go, while leaving a double standard. Biafran is here, for those that see it in spirit and those that can feel it, I can feel it. I can see it, Biafran is here. We just have to hurry up, if we don't want to waste time or if we don't want to wait for more years. Biafran is trending, Biafran is here. Thank you.
Thank you our APM. Our Minister of Information, are you still here? Ndaa Abueni, are you still here? Hello?
I just wanna say, sorry, it's like, you know, I, I took too long, so probably sleep while I'm speaking.
Hello, Honorable Information Minister.
Alright, let's take the hand then, uh. Oz, okay, Oz, can I carry on, put yourself?
Okay. Ozem is not ready, what about the informer? Hello? APN is like that, what about, include the number, include the number, are you there?
They're all muted.
Who, all career carries, so.
They're all muted, oh, mute. APM, can you mute, can you mute them?
Uh, let me see. Let me see if I can, Ozem is here.
Why this only has perhaps those of. What about the admin, Nahuweni? Is he calling you muted?
Administration is muted. Alex, Alex. Unmute people, Alex, oh, he is not even, um, he is not even this, what could that say, what the hell?
Okay, thank you, thank you, uh, who is so good now? Honorable love, thank you, who is to go, who is to go next?
We don't know that, that's all you said.
Alright, wait, I will be giving them mic, uh, include the number, include the number, go, include the number, over to you.
Thank you, thank you so, thank you so much, ah, I was surprised though because.
Police is still on the post, so I wake the whole world up.
Great in Biafran, please, okay, uh, uh, please, APM, thank you so much, Honorable, uh, Minister, Prime Minister of Brigitte. Thank you so much for everything you said. In fact, it's like, I don't know whether you, you take what, can I say you take what God said, some, the message I want to give to Biafran is like you said, everything sir. I am so surprised as you are saying everything and, uh, 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 in fact, we are not communicating. Um, please, Biafran people, please, I want everybody to hear me, please, please, and please, and please. Once the message come like this, forget about who is saying it, take that message if you did it right. APM has said everything and I don't know how, how he want to say it to us again for us to understand. And please, as we hear, let. And please, as we here, let's all just keep quiet, Biafrans. We have work to do. I am telling our people, as we come to such a sways to talk, please let us just not enter that space. Because not everybody that passes the space. Let us devote to that message, those you call, you call them. You are, is the task force on our shoulder. Like, I, I don't think there's any other achievement I want to achieve than this. And no achievement that pass what we're doing now. If you think there's no that, you are tasked on your shoulder, I want you to check. There's this message that I want to tell you now, it's coming from all of us, it coming from the projects of that land. Okay, and this message, I don't know whether I'm saying, saying this for again, I may not say it again because uh, uh, I sometimes I want to say it, I'll be thinking what people say. If you are from this four, five, five tribe that come together, come together, listen, we are saying, he say, many people don't know what you're saying, he say, whenever they, we say, uh, uh, we call that what, our sheep. Why are we saying this? Say, he say means five, why? Some people don't know why. I need you to go and ask question to your elders, why? These five people that come together to form to be in the world. Listen, we're saying, he say, and anyone that type two, you are from there. Whether you speak the language, you call it Go language, that language is not what is evil. Evil is from this in the world that come to agree together. Those who be, you must be one for this time, one is our, one is his soup, he do, Henry and Oru. This is five. Go and ask your people question. You must come from one, whether you are Galah, you are Robo, you are Soko, you must come from one of this. To know, so to stop denying your ancestors. The more you are denying them, you are that land, you are telling that land, for this to take it from you. Because when you reject the owner of the land, you have disowned them and they can't stay in the land. You are fighting to secure that land. The person you are securing what it belongs to him and they don't, they don't recognize the person, so how can you get it? Or if you don't know the person, you don't know the person that own that property you hated. If they ask you the question about the person, you don't say, and don't interact with that person, what makes you think you win the case? Listen, the people again, the people that, you see today, they are trying to be leaders, governors and, and executives, they are not our people. They are not our thoughts, and I'm not saying this for you to not do what they said before. The ancestors say you should take this serious. Full army have planted this for many, many years. Born their children in our land, give them our names, they be our names, to use them to take over us. Bita Amba is not a human man. Bita Amba is not a human. Um, the one in the state, all that come to say for that, that is. He's not a human man, please, let us pass this message seriously, very serious. But, uh, why, why, why L S U T invited Goan for his migration? Why did he invite Goan? This message is serious. All of them, I'm talking to you, these people, all of them that are, apparently they said, they put, they, they put that score us, and said that us, they are not our people. They are, that is why, but what is called, the, I don't know, yeah, I'm a small woman. I'm telling you this for you to, I'm, I'm damn serious, not like before. Want to take this message to be serious. Because, imagine where, um, Benjamin Carney is pushing indigenous, that to make a full army, if man, if Biafran woman, he become a, an indigenous, indigenous person. They're telling you that, uh, our people should, should tell them, and they say, if they marry our person, certain person live in our land that ten years, you become a indigenous person. This is how they want to handle it to their people, their people. That people name, man, that language they're speaking is Takiya. Is Takiya, that's what they think them for DNA test. If they, if they prove me wrong, I'll join them. I will join them. This is what I'm telling them, I'm telling them, the ancestor of the land, this message is serious. It's not only peculiar from where he says he speak Hebrew, entire Biafran history. All of them, you should bear each other to those, the, the president, they destroy our original way of choosing tradition. Because of their culture and tradition, they destroy it because they know that that way cannot pick, uh, strength blood. It, it, for the cause of.
Include the number, include the number.
So, I'm running up, I'm running up.
Include the number. I don't know. Include the number, please, we have had.
Okay.
And, and also, also, hold on, hold on, hold on before you, you finish. Um, this is not time for us to be nailing the injuries of water. The western attitude to us because we are playing games of politics now. Listen to me, my friend, we are playing games of politics now. So we have many cards on, on the US Congress. So when you come to the Bia, please, go to the awareness you want to create. Go straight to the awareness you want to create and don't go back to me telling us what they have done to us. We know how that we, 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 we have something on the table now. Thank you.
Yes, I am not talking about Western, I do not mention them here. This message is not from Western at all, I'm not against them, I'm only presenting them. I'm talking about the people that are with us, they are not our people, that's why I'm telling you truth, we should take it serious. Because they hand over our land to their people, which is foolish, they are not our blood, this message, take it serious. Thank you.
Yes.
This speech of our, uh, APM, ten thousand AJ, please, all the home on is seventy thousand AJ. I will send it tomorrow morning, you receive. Take this message as serious or you forget about the other.
Thank you, open the number, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you, thank you, thank you. Please, let's go to the next person. H C O A Legos like.
Akamarama kaiga kurum kudi namba, oh, akamarama.
Yeah, greetings to everyone. Please, am I audible?
Yes.
Okay, yes, Akamarama kaiga kurum kudi namba. And every.
Every other person.
We move, we move on. I salute you so much, my honorable APM. I will continue to salute you. You have, uh, proven to us what, uh, resoluteness means and what, uh, indefatigability means. What doggedness means. Now, it's qualities that we need to drive home this agenda of freedom. You have proven it to us, you and your officials of government in exile and also the government in the homeland. I appreciate everyone. It is my pleasure to always work with people who are serious minded. People who understand the purpose. People who don't get distracted by the sideways. Focus on the ahead, the gate to the destination. I'm so happy. Um, there's a saying that one cannot go to the land of the spirit and fetch father. Only to come out to the land of humans and allow one idiot to put it off. That is what this present administration of APM represent or demonstrate. And I urge every Biafran to relate that and support that with everything that he has. I would not fail to appreciate the leadership of Abueni State, my respects. And, um, every other person, those I remember and those I cannot remember. It is a pleasure, we move. We will keep on keeping on. There's no, there's no back to go. In case if anybody thinks that he or she wants to go back, there's no back to go. If you look behind, it is a worse state of slavery that you will see. The only direction that you will look and see freedom is front. So we move in front with everything that we have. That is the way it is. Um, I want to support the speech of APM this night, it is a very informative speech. Yes. I like when he was touching the aspect of Iran. A lot of us may not understand that angle, but it is where APM said. Iran represents, uh, Asia. To remember the king that attacks axis in the Holy Book. Asia, King Attaxus of Asia. There are Iran today. Just like, uh, Iraq is Babylon of Nebuchadnezzar. That is by the way, APM. I'm supporting your speech tonight with two thousand AJ. And, um, I'm supporting this great occasion tonight of Abueni. Town hall meeting with three thousand AJ, making five, nde one.
Nde one. Thank you, C O A Legos like zone. Akamarama. Kakako, Legos like zone, oh. Thank you.
Thank you, C O A.
Thank you.
And we should remind Biafran that, oh, get ruo. Oh, get ruo, oh, get ruo. Oh, gen we no we ruo, oh, more Biafra. Oh, get ruo, oh, get ruo. That no, no ra, oh, more Biafra. Thank you. Honorable Information Minister, who was next?
Um, Honorable, please, go to the hand for me. You have goes, be calling them.
Okay. Mazozemina, can you unmute yourself? Mazozemina, unmute yourself. Can you unmute yourself? Can you unmute? He's not there. What about Sister Eformer, are you ready? Okay. Alex of Abueni State, please unmute yourself and speak to Biafrans. Alex of Abueni, please. Speak, you can unmute yourself, or I'll unmute him.
Big girl, I think, um, when everybody was muted by the host or somebody, they cannot unmute themselves. You have to send the message to unmute.
Oh. How will I do this? Okay.
Sister Betty, can you unmute anybody?
I have been trying to do that, but I cannot.
Oh, well, that's why they are not, because they can't unmute.
Uh, Minister Sonny?
I think he's stepped out.
Yeah, hello. He has, he has unmuted us, he has unmuted us, thank you. Okay, alright, thank you. Thank you. I'm back again. One of our formidable brother, one of our, uh, formidable brother by name Ezzy. Uh, he was the one who gave, uh, PM account for us to be using here in homeland of fishing god's instructions. They frozen all his accounts. So today, he then came up and said that he wants to welcome our APM. He, yeah, he transferred one hundred thousand AJ for us. Wow, you said his name is, uh, Ezzy, Mazi Ezzy. Okay.
Ezzy G, Ezzy G, yeah.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you so much.
One, one hundred thousand AJ.
Okay, he's from your state, Abueni?
Abueni, Abueni State, yes, yes.
Okay, alright, thank you, Mazi Ezzy, wherever you are, Biafrans appreciate you. Akamarama kaiga kurum, Mazi Ezzyo. Thank you very much, we appreciate him. Biafrans appreciate you wherever you are. Thank you for your honesty. Okay, you can put your hand down, Ezzy Adema, or you have something more to tell us? No. Okay, okay, Ozemina, Mazozemina, you can go next.
Okay, alright, uh, thank you everyone, uh, I thank the A, uh, the APM for a great speech as usual.
Yeah.
Uh, I have made a payment of fifty AJ to support the APM's speech. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ezzy Ada, Ozemina, thank you so much, Biafrans appreciate you a great deal. Akamarama kaiga kurum, Ezzy Ado Zemina. Thank you, sorry, big girl. Yes, Sister Betty.
Ozemina, how, what's his donation?
One hun- a thousand, a hundred thousand AJ, AJ.
That's not Ezzy from Abueni?
No, 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 uh, Ozemina, fifty AJ. Fifty AJ.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Alright, okay, Mazi Alex of Abueni State, is he the rep? Can you unmute yourself? I heard everybody has been muted. Mazi Alex, I can see he's been sending messages up. What about Red and Fury? Hello, can you take the mic? Red and Fury, oh, what's happening?
Okay, I might be, I can be heard now, right?
Okay, yeah.
Alright, thank you very much, um, greetings to you once again, uh, Honorable APM. Thank you very much for this wonderful speech. Just give, like, we have always said, like I've always said, your, your speech, give us hope. Give us strength, give courage, you understand, for those that have despair in life, in life. We are encouraged whenever we hear you speak. We, we get our hope back, we are hopeful that tomorrow will be okay. When Biafra comes, everything will be fine. So I really, really want to say very big thank you. And to the, uh, the issue that you made mention of in Iran. You know, you are the real indigenous of Iran, but today, uh, they are being taken over by the Islamic regime of Hezbollah. To the point that even the real indigenous, the crown prince, there is a palace, uh, palace, palace, something like that. He been chased away from Iran tree and he's, uh, taking, uh, he's taking refuge in the US, you understand? So today, now is the leader of the opposition, that, that they want to take back their, their territory. Now, you see, even, I think the statistic, you, you are not very quite our APM, because I think the Muslim, according to Maya Tussi, got up, Maya Tussi, say, is a patient, is a patient as well, you understand? You said the, the, the statistic of Muslim in Iran is just about around thirty percent. That majority of them, they are Christians, you understand? So they are just forcing these people to live the kind of life to believe in a religion that they don't really want to be part of. And before I will support your speech, APM, before these people are there and begin to make, uh, a topic out of what you said again, I think you made a mistake when you said that pizza was a subter, that, that, that was killing Christian, I think it is salt, salsa. So I think you just can't correct, so it is salt, uh huh. So, uh huh, so I was.
Maybe that was why I was saying.
Yeah. So that later became poor, so you made a mistake, yes, so that they won't sit down and say topic again, ah, he don't want the light again, but it's pizza that was, you understand? So this, I just want to quickly, so, um, and for your speech tonight, I think I'm going to support that speech with one thousand AJ, which is going to, which is going to make my total donation for tonight, uh, four thousand AJ. Thank you very much, our honorable APM. I think you are just, uh, you're getting such, uh, in such a time as this, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Red and Fury, we appreciate you, Biafrans appreciate you. Akamarama kaiga kurum, Red and Fury. Thank you, Red and Fury, you can put your hand down. You can put your hand down, Red and Fury, what about Alex, Mazi Alex of Abueni, are you ready now? Mazi Alex of Abueni, that's all your hand up now, are you ready?
Yes, yes, I'm ready.
Alright, you are welcome.
I have tried it, I have tried to unmute myself, but, uh, it was muted. So thank you. Great Biafrans, I appreciate everyone of us once again for staying, staying awake with us. Thank you, I appreciate our acting Prime Minister. You never speak long. We are, we was enjoying your speech. Because, uh, when we are hearing, anytime we are hearing from you, we are hearing the voice of the god of Biafa. Yes, the voice that is speaking from all governmental offices all over the world. So we always enjoy your speech. So it is because we are being muted that eh we never replied. Thank you for the great eh lecture and for the speech you have, and for the address. And the word of encouragement, a way to make sure that eh we achieve our dream. And that's our dream is Biafra nation, nothing more, nothing less. Thank you, I want to, on behalf of eh me and my family. In eh if the counting of for Habeni State. I'm supporting with twenty thousand AJ more, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, your friends.
Thank you, twenty thousand AJ, sister, honorable birthday here from Alex. Thank you so much, your friends appreciate you, that's wonderful. My hands up, please. My hands up, this wonderful day for your friends, as we said. I want to use this opportunity to remind us during the expose of our Prime Minister, we should all remember. He showed us the man from Oweri that who was a dema, made a, is it an Imam of Oweri and another one of Enugu. And another one from eh former, eh was it called Delta, somewhere in Delta. Then we are all speaking Igbo's and they told us the history of how their parents came, when their parents came and when their parents brought them. They are all Fulani speaking Awa, languages speaking Igbo fluently, we should not be deceived by what's going on right now. I am telling you the entire nap in going on, the entire people in the middle of the people. In the entire Biafra state are done by the Fulanis, nobody would tell us, there is no Igbo blooded. Igbo blooded individual that would do what is doing, what is happening right now, they are all Fulanis. They are all Fulanis who have come to be with us from time immemorial, their fathers brought them. Of course, you must know what blood is, blood is in the DNA, the DNA is in the blood. They cannot stop being what their fathers is, the scripture. Just said, we know them, Christ said, we know them, their father, we know who the father is, the devil, the serpent. So that is who they are. They have already learned our language, they can speak Oweri fluently, they can speak Enugu fluently, they can speak anything. Our, our dialect, they can speak fluently, and when go to commit their crimes, somebody will saying they are all Igbo's, they are never Igbo's. Igbo's do not indulge in crimes like this, how can you kill your brother? How can you harvest their organs? How can you do order, how can we have governors who behave like this? In fact, I support hmm eh our brother that just spoke, that just spoke earlier. All the governors of the southeast regions are not Igbo's, seriously. This whole mixed up marriages of a team from time immemorial, they were advertising and they were promoting these marriages. Was for a time like this, infiltrators to mix it up, mix us up, and at a time like this. Who not know what to believe, but seriously, these people are not Igbo's. The clear evidence of the man from Oweri that spoke Oweri vividly, very, very smooth, very well, told us when his fathers came and brought them. And the particular locality they are, they are living, they are fighting over the Amasa. And all of those areas, these people speak Oweri very fluently, you can doubt it. So when they go to commit crime, crime, you would say they are Igbo's, they are not Igbo's, these people are Fulanis. And they are using this opportunity right now to take our land and hand it over to them perpetually, and that will not happen. Therefore, we are saying. And we're going to use this opportunity we have right now, wherever you are listening, that is the real thing, do not be deceived wherever you are. The enemy have come in among us, they have dwelling within us and among us, and now they feel that is the time to take over the land. It's seriously, if we are. Up one accord with one voice and support what our leaders have started, what our Prime Minister has started, what Enyendu has started. What our eternal leader has started, we are not going to lose. But we relax wherever we are, especially those of us in diaspora, and thinking that we are fine here, we are never fine. Because when your land is being taken and um our host countries and nations, we'll one day, something will happen and we'll want to leave or go back. Honestly, I would not have a place to fall back or go back to, where are we going to be? Wherever you are here in diaspora, wherever you are, but at home, support the liberation of yourself and of your children. I know that what we are doing right now might not be for us, but for the cost of our children yet to come born. There is no two ways about it, time to deceive ourselves is gone. All of them sabotaging ourselves or sabotaging themselves, that is all for you, you are sabotaging yourself at your own peril. We are bringing, and this is the government, Brigi is a government, you cannot go back autopilot. You cannot be ascending, going higher, and you are now all of a sudden dropping back. Brigi has been strategized, Brigi has been built, a foundation had been built for Biafra liberation, and nobody is going to take it away. Do not be deceived. If all of you, I will talk to you are intellectuals, until you're showing that you are intellectuals. You are intellectuals that you don't know what you are doing, or you don't know what you want. What do you want? What do you want, where you tarnish the image of Brigi, that you have once, you have once belonged. And you have once protected, what do you want to gain? To tell, you want to tell the zoo government that you are doing nothing? You want to tell the good, the zoo government that our prime APN is doing nothing? What is that you want to gain? When you sabotage, when you criticize the efforts and achievements that APN is doing in the White House, in Washington DC. With our lobbies, what do you want to gain? When you criticize our lobbies, what do you want to gain when you tarnish their image, what do you want to gain? When you tell them to, when you are telling them that they will not succeed, why our PM and everyone said they must succeed, who are you to say they will not succeed? Do your own and they are doing their own, and altogether, we are going to achieve Biafra. But when you come out to show us that the saboteur you are, I am telling you that we have crossed this ocean and this mountain. If we are able to restore down the DOS, DOS discreet people. Those people who only do thought he was working with, if we are able to restore them down to this distance, who are you to rise up now with your ugly head as a baby saboteur? And we are still talking to you today, we have restored here the woman, the demented woman of Georgia. Who rose up with her USB, if we were able to disconnect her, what are you saying? What are you saying, we will restore you to stand still, thank you so much. Thank you so much, everyone who is listening to us, support your freedom, for this is the time to do it, there is no time left. Thank you, um hands are up now. Can we take one other ola, Adim, can you replace on, on mute? On mute and speak. One other ola, Adim, can you unmute?
Just take it off. And go back.
Hello, Honorable Betty, okay, she is unmute, she give me turn right now. Okay, one other ola, Adim.
Hello.
Yeah, you can take, you can take.
Yeah, eh. Yeah, I think you are hearing me.
Yes, right well.
Okay, okay, and make a lay, my sister, Kim, eh how are you?
Kim is fine, yeah, she is good, I don't think she's listening right now. What I heard, we are hearing you.
Oh, what the good work you are doing on S, I always follow, it's not that I don't follow. So let me first of all thank my APN, APN. I'm speaking in Igbo, please. Eh you push up, pardon me, I speak, I like, I like to speak in Igbo because eh.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, maybe I can push more English, yeah, so for people who doesn't understand English, so let me start with. If I could, we are not using English for this advice, let us stand strong on what we believe. Our Bible said that whatever you believe, stand on it, don't change, don't shift. So we stand on Biafra and nothing, and nothing we can change, we can never change our mind, they need to tell. We have crossed the Rubicon, we will go far. Since twenty twenty one, we are still on this Biafra struggle. If this land come, if. It pass, sun come shine, it pass, this sun come, do it, we are still here, we will still be here until God Almighty give us Biafra. So what I'm saying, please, my people, stand strong. The people who call themselves Igbo, really, I don't think whether they are Igbo. Because I speak on S, I think last week, I said that, why is it our people? These Igbo people, some Igbo people, mostly some, some. They are not contributing money, they are not doing anything, or what they are doing is to continue the people, the people, where the money is. Hello?
Sister Betty mute, damn. Okay, please.
Hello, should I continue or what?
Yeah, go ahead, you're listening.
Yeah, I said, I said, I said, why our people, Igbo people, some Igbo people try to be peeping. Peeping, that is what I speak on S last, last week, say, why are they peeping where money is coming, where, where money is not coming? When Mazinandakanne first started this joint, where we are there? Where we are there, why can't they come out and start the joint? Okay, they are, see, my people, let me tell you people, these people that separate, these two group, they are the one that keep our Prime Minister there. They are do, they can never deny human being, deny spirit, deny God that they are not the one, they are the one that keep our Prime Minister there. But if they are not the one, why are they fighting Ogenkere, why are they fighting our APN? Imam Madabo, is he not Imam Madabo, and, and even me, I follow, raise my hand. Ah, when we are making vote on eh eh Mazin Ogenkere, I follow. Then why now, why that vote now they canceling, what did they see now they canceling? Why are we running, we are going, we are there is money, 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 why they are going where there is money?
It's sabotage, it's nothing.
I'm asking this question and nobody can answer me, why they are going where there is money? Why now, they never go to fight Shagumi, why? They're supposed to go and fight Shagumi, they're supposed to go and fight. Are the other fights supposed to go to Nigerian government or governors in southeast? Why are they come and being themselves on this thing we are doing?
Okay.
Let God Almighty forgive them, let God forgive them.
Thank you, man.
So my people, I'm, 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 please, let me just conclude. Yeah, I'm supporting eh this eh eh Habeni, yeah, I'm supporting Habeni Alex and eh his eh. His eh state, yeah, I'm supporting him with eh two thousand AJ. So I will send the money, yeah, to, to, to them. Thank you very much, God bless you.
Thank you, thank you, Madha Olo. Adim, thank you very much, God bless you, breath, your friends appreciate. Okay, Sister Betty, it's like your hand is up or something?
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, go ahead.
For his wonderful speech. And thank him because I believe that God gave us all these leaders. With eh beautiful and wonderful knowledge. Eh the teaching about Asia and this Iran. It was fantastic. So I'm going to use eh five thousand AJ. Eh to support that speech and thank him so much. And the five thousand AJ to support the Rage and Fury.
Okay.
Thirty thousand AJ for me.
Okay, you got the other, uh the eh um, the two thousand AJ from the last speaker?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you so much. Thank you so much, Honorable Betty, your friends appreciate you. Thank you so much, we appreciate you.
There were.
There were.
Yeah, based on eh studies. I don't see any parents that will bring eh. That will bring a newborn baby to the world and decide to kill that baby. Or you can, I can go by using this word eh. No one, no one will kill this one. Like eh earlier on, I talked about Iran. Ayu Otola, the leader of Iran, Iranian regime currently now, he's not from Iran. That is why the destruction, whatever going on in Iran, they don't kill, because enough, enough from there. He, he and the entire cabinet. All the leaders of currently Iran. In Iran, they are not from Iran, so all these people. That are killing Biafrans, bringing difficult to kill Biafrans, they are not Biafrans.
Biafrans, exactly.
True Biafran, we kill the Biafran.
Exactly.
They are not Biafrans.
They are Fulanis.
Yes, they are not Biafrans, no true one we kill. Especially when these people know that eh the Nigerian terrorist state that they are working with. Are coming to kill us, not just kill us, not even just trying to Islamize us, take over our own land. For example, if it is true that Hope Ouzo Demas is a Biafran, right? And how do you think eh he will support Nigerian terrorists with all this Fulani jihadis?
Fulani is true.
Own land, including his own village.
Yeah, it's not.
It is not a Biafran.
They are not Biafrans.
Yes, that's why they are so pleased to work with the terrorist groups. So we have to be careful, those around us. Those we talk to. So many of these people are not Biafrans. They are not, but it's so painful that the real Biafrans now, you know, eh they, some of them. And instead of fighting back. You know, eh you know, I talk more about Iran today, because it's so interesting when you look at what happened in Iran, exactly what is happening. Eh in Nigeria and they're trying to extend it to Biafran. You know, that's why I emphasize more and talk about more about Iran. Iranians over eighty years ago, they are, over eighty percent are Christian. Over eighty percent are Christian, just do your research, back over sixty, seventy years ago, look at their dress code. They dressed like the West. They have a caution. So when this eh, when this eh Islamist. I'll call it invasion or eh or call it jihad or whatever. So they change their call, you know, try to change their caution, change their way of life, change their religion. That is exactly what these people are trying to do in their Biafran.
What they did in Turkey.
They did it, talking to. So I'm with Biafran, so we're not gonna, we can't let it happen. It happened before and eh I'm, I'm listening to eh one of our comrades. He said that our forefather, he made a mistake, eh what happened before, they did not. They fought like warriors, they did not make. They did not, they fought like warriors, they did not make mistakes. It's a business and trade of that time. So what happened is that they did not negotiate properly. Yes, business, whatever that is happening then, they did not negotiate properly with the West. That is why I keep saying, we are not against the West. We are not blaming the West. It's a business of that time. If I come to do business with you and if you don't negotiate properly, it's not my fault. So this time around, we will negotiate better. We won't let anybody cheat us, you know, uh, take advantage of us.
And that.
Those of you that do buying and selling, if somebody come to your store to buy something that you sell for two thousand. And when this buyer, you know, you happen to tell this buyer maybe like in Biafran. It's not like where you target price, you always gonna, you have it that, you know, you can, you you price it, you know, price and you negotiate the price. Let's say the goods that you're selling for two thousand dollar and you start with five thousand. And that person jump and say, okay, uh, actually, no, goods start, yeah, you sell at two thousand, or you start at five thousand, so this buyer now can negotiate. And if this buyer jump and, and say, okay, four thousand five hundred. Right? So you make a lot of profit, right? Okay, yes, because if the buyer have just go straight to the same two thousand that you really want to sell it. You know, why you start at five thousand so that you guys can negotiate it and probably come down to that two thousand? So you're not gonna tell the buyer, say, no, don't pay the four thousand five hundred, it's two thousand. That's what happened. So our forefather, fore, 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 they fought like warrior, they did what they're supposed to do, we could fit. But they did not negotiate well. So that's just what happened. So we are not going to be blaming. When you keep blaming, blaming somebody that shows your weakness, that show that, uh, you're not regular, something is wrong. So they did what they're supposed to do. It's just that it's business of that time. So this time we will negotiate better in a way that we have a fair handshake. Fifty fifty handshake. You're not gonna rip me off. I'm not going to rip you off. Live and let live.
Yeah.
Yes, so I heard one of our comrades today, they are talking about all these, uh, governors that are parading themselves, that working for Nigeria, they are not Biafrans, no true Biafran. Leader, we allow foreigner to come and kill his own people. No true Biafran will do that. So all these people are infiltrators. They are being planted.
Yeah.
One thing with me, Biafrans, you know, we are good people, we don't think evil, we are open minded people. So while they are planning how they're going to destroy us, we are still doing buying and selling with them, laughing with them. Not in that they are cooking something.
Imagine.
We learn better now. So that's why now we need to now set our eyes on the ball today and what the future we hold. We want a better Biafran future, not a temporary one of today, tomorrow. So we need to start thinking ahead, what the future we hold for us now, the thousand years.
You see.
That is a mistake or what I would say, we kind of, uh, we come short of. But it is.
Thank you.
What you are doing, keep supporting your freedom. Freedom is not given and freedom is very sweet. Freedom is very sweet. It's something worth fighting for. A country that would be free from terrorism, like this, uh, this Nigerian terrorist. We want a country that will be free from all this nonsense. A country where we train our children in a good environment, you know, everything that life have to offer. That is what we need. I will keep fighting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, our APM. Thank you for that wonderful additional submission to clear the air. Can we, yeah, we do appreciate you. We have another hand, Maz, uh, Honorable Eminique, the rep, reggae rep, USA, North and South America. You can have the mic, sir.
You, ma'am. Uh, thank you, uh, Izzy Ada Abigail.
Thank you. I'm encouraging, I'm encouraging this program right now.
Yeah, that's wonderful, that's wonderful. You've done wonderful. I mean, you, you, uh, you are on it. I, uh, I greet all the honoreables in the house and the ministers and my APM. And I salute our leader Mazinandakanne and our GM, uh, Mazisamunekma. And, um, I also remember our eternal leader. And, uh, uh, our president, uh, General Luju and Effiong. And General Effiong, Philip Effiong, that is. And, um, you know, I have lots to say, but I'm trying to bridge it, you know, kind of, uh, be brief, as brief as possible, so that I won't take too much time. But, uh, I, I like to congratulate my, my, uh, my APM, His Excellency. Uh, Honorable Mazzi, uh, again, get it. Um, eh, eh, I, I tell you, you are flying, you are flying high. I know you fly higher, but you are flying high, you know. Um, I don't care what they say or do. Um, you, you have, you have, I mean, taken Biafran. To a level that no one can anymore doubt that. Yeah, on the way to actual Biafran, not virtual.
My, uh, honorable rep.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I want you to take that back, not me. We have.
We have.
Yes, we have, but you are spare, you are, you are the tip of the spear. Yeah, we are, we are, yes, actually, yes, all of us, but you are the tip of the spear.
He's on the wheel, he is steering it.
Yes, the BLA are doing, yeah, they're accurate already, you know, so the BLA are doing their job, everybody's doing their job. But that the, this actual position you are in is, is not by accident. No, I, I'm a spiritual person and I believe that, uh, there is a spiritual aspect to everything we are going through. Even, uh, uh, even the situation we are in now, there is a spiritual aspect to. And I go back to the days of, uh, again, Persia. With Darius. When Darius, uh, uh, overtook, uh, uh, Babylon, uh, and, uh, uh, um, then Jeremiah, uh, told Darius, listen, we, the, you were, you were in, in our prophecies. Where the Lord mentioned you by name, by name. That you will build him a temple, that you will rescue his people. And and the Hamaiah was appointed to go and rebuild the temple. And, uh, and he encouraged, Darius encouraged, Darius encouraged all the Israelites. Uh, the, the, uh, the, the northern kingdom to, you know, to contribute money and everything so that the Hamaiah could go. And rebuild the temple in Jerusalem. Now. Uh, that happened and I see a place, I see United States in a place of, of, of needs to Persia at the time and I see them saying, go and rebuild Biafran. And you are in the position of Nehemiah right now. That's what I'm trying to point out to you. And Israelites were contributing money, doing everything. So, um, that being said, let's put that aside, you know. But you, your history of Iran is right on this part. Now, people don't know that. Uh, as a matter of fact, another nation that was on that same trajectory is Lebanon. Do we know that Lebanon used to be a one hundred percent Christian nation? Lebanon. Today, the Hezbollah has taken over Lebanon. And this is why Iran has a relationship with Hezbollah in Lebanon. It's there, they were supporting Hezbollah in Lebanon. So what these people are doing, uh, they are slowly, you know, introducing terrorism around the world. And by the grace of the Most High, many of us have come to realize that we, you know, that we owe it to our future generation. Do not let this happen to us. And, and I also will probably go out on a limb here and say that, um, many of our leaders. Starting from Zik, Nam, uh, uh, Dr. Namde Azig, I'm beginning to question their heritage. Because no true, no true Biafran will negotiate a way. The, the, you know, the basically the culture and the, the tradition of the people, because that's what happened in Biafran. Uh, and so, uh, we'll put that aside. And, um, I congratulate the state of Habuin. Having the, 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 you know, the will with all, you know, the courage. And, and to come up, you know, to host our APM and to invite us to come and receive him. And, um, I will, I did not pick up cola initially. So I wanted to pick up cola and, uh, basically evoke the names of those states. That, uh, that, that I would, you know, pick this color in, in their names. According to what, uh, 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 Izzy Ada Abigail, apparently, yeah. Now, um, one of the issues I have now is, I want to know, I want to focus on our Western states. And that is Urobo, Isoko, uh, Iwere, I hope I'm saying it right, Iwere, Ika. Uh, and Nioma, and I believe Igudomigudo, but, uh, I, it seems like Igudomigudo has three. Hmm, split into three and I don't know if they are all one state, uh, uh. Can anybody help me here, Igudomigudo? Is Igudomigudo, is it in three?
There are two types, it says that they have two type of Igudomigudo. They are gathered from, after for that, they, oh, they, um, join with, they, they join with some parts from old data state and old industry states. So they have two Igudomigudo.
Igudomigudo has Asian and Eden and one of our sister has represented them.
Asian.
Asian, Asian and Eden.
And you say Eden.
Yeah, I, I, is it Eden, Igudomigudo, one of our sister represented this.
Okay, I see Eden.
Yes.
I don't, I see Eden.
No, the open mouthed another.
Yeah. Asian, Eden, yeah.
I get, I get in.
Information Minister, I will meet you.
Uh, wait, sorry.
So I'm still on, uh, okay, so I see Eden, Igudomigudo, right?
Yes.
Yeah, let me read them for you. Is Afemi, Igudomigudo.
Okay.
Esan, Igudomigudo, Eden, Igudomigudo, three of them, three of them.
If, if Afemi, Eden and, and.
Esan, Esan.
Esan, okay, okay, good, got it. Okay, thank you very much. And, um, so what I'll do here is for each of, for, for Urobo. Let me start from Afemi, from, for Afemi.
Sorry, sorry, uh, uh, um, uh, rep, this, this five, this Asian Igudomigudo, Afema represented, maybe you're going to take another state.
It's okay, I'll take, I'll, I'll go.
Let, let me, yeah, let me, maybe I can.
It's okay, it's okay, I'll go, that's why I'm focused, hold on, hold on, that's why I'm focusing on the regions. Because I want to do this region and the next time, uh, one of the, um, of the, uh, uh, you know, um, the fatal states, uh, is, is, is hosting, I will do the next region. I believe we still have about five, I think it's five regions. Uh, if I do this region, there will be four left, right? There will be four left, yes, the south, the east, the north and the central. So, yeah, that's all right, that's all right, that's all right. Um, let me, let me just, uh, go ahead and do this. Now, I will start in the alphabetic order to help me remember. So Afemi, I will pick up cola with ten EJMA.
Okay.
And, uh, uh, Esan, I will pick up cola with another ten EJMA.
Okay.
And, uh, let's see, uh, Eden, I will pick up. Cola with ten EJMA.
Okay.
Ika, I'll pick up cola with ten EJMA. Iwere, is that Iwere? Oh, Iwere, I'll pick up cola with, uh, uh, ten EJMA.
Iwere.
Yeah, and Urobo, Isoko, I'll pick up, uh, cola with ten EJMA. So that will give, that will be sixty EJMA. For my Western states.
Okay.
Pick up cola. Okay, on the same token, I will also, um, uh, just applaud my, uh, APM on, for his speech. I will also distribute.
Hmm.
I will also. Afemi, applaud our APM's speech with twenty EJMA. For, uh, Esan.
We are not hearing you.
We are not hearing you.
Don't hear me again.
I hear you. We are hearing him.
We are hearing him, please. He's the first.
Okay, okay.
And I will bet you have to reset, check your set. We are hearing him clearly.
Esan, I'm, uh, applauding our APM's speech with twenty egemma. For Eden, I'm applauding my APM's speech with another twenty egemma. For Eka, I'm applauding my APM with another twenty egemma. Uh, Iwere, I applaud my APM's wonderful speech with another twenty egemma. And for Urabo, Isoko, I also applaud his great speech for. With twenty egemma and that will be altogether, uh, one hundred eighty egemma.
Egemma.
And I will top it off with twenty egemma to bring it up to two hundred egemma.
And I cook what I care about. Thank you. They will.
I will send the, now, send the receipt to my. List of information. I mean, yes, my message information.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much for your wonderful. Part. Thank you, our honorable rep. Thank you. The next person, Susan, is, uh, please, call the number, he has another thing to give us. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, my man, my lady, thank you so much. I want to, here to, uh, to appreciate our mothers, our ladies. Uh, the message to appreciate you and also to remind you that. Uh, the power, the cosmology of our land based upon you, you are not using it, okay? Um, that message I have for you, you have a lot of power to use, okay? That is why in our land, in the whole world, nobody, no other people have the power you have at that time. That is why when Omar does speak, nobody can counter their judgment, because their judgment remains for the good of the land, peace. So anyone that is Omar now, that are bringing division is not a part of us. And if you know, that's why. Our land, the justice of our land in cosmology is Anna, Anna is the female pantheon. That is responsible for the justice of the land. That is why women don't sell land in our land, women don't sell land. Okay, so your power, use it, use it now, go and use that power, please. You have a lot of power to do something. That is why you are different. That is why they are jealous. The system of our ancestors considered that Omar that have the fire, they say, when it's, it's like this come. You come and use your power to call on the national justice, national justice to do something. And that is best done of those who are still having their monthly circle, that day you, you lock yourself inside and come on the nature to. Give our people our justice, freedom, to, uh, power our differences. Okay, please, use your power, that's what I want to remind you, okay? And any other that is already in that division or, or, you're not, you're not part of us. If you're a Biafran block, you know your power. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mazin Kuti Number, your wisdom, your wisdom. Thank you so much. Supporting this with any egemma. Okay, Mazin Kuti Number, you can bring then your hand. Uh, honorable rep, you can bring then your hand.
Yes, 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 ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, we have, um, Mazie Victor also next, you can handle the mic. Mazie Victor also, are you ready? Okay, maybe it's not close to his mic. Okay, we, we have, uh, Mazie, okay, honorable, okay, please. Ah, it's like their mic is not open. Hmm, 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 can you unmute yourselves, please? Uh-oh. Who is going to help us out?
Hmm.
Hmm.
They cannot mute, no, they cannot mute.
Okay, Mazie Victor, can you unmute? Mazie Victor also, okay, good. All right.
Now, I've seen that when you're barely, it's come back. It's better to come late than you did not even come at all.
Yeah.
And then, I got a man not here, come by Jibido meeting, they can only, only name. Why did I come to the meeting? Uh-huh. So, and I, I got a couple television, I got a copy and I'll. So, we are, I can get this division.
Hmm.
Oh, my, I need it all.
Hmm.
So the reason why I'm saying is that, off the mic, off the mic, it's not only for that, that is close to you. It's, it's also for those other people who want to see a joke, you know, off the mic, for the audience. Now they should off the television, off it, it's not because of just you, not because of the next person, what, like for everybody, if you off this television now. There's nothing to watch again, everybody will go, you understand? It'll be coming, happening APM or volleyball. And that, that, or, 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 that lights that we are using to, 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 to block that. To switch this television that we are watching now. Nobody should go there, I beg. Hey, that light, we are protecting it, it's very, very important, that light that will not be able to gather here, please. I don't have anything much to say. I am supporting with fifty egemma, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mazie Victor also, thank you for that wonderful submission. That wonderful idioms, ilulina head, oh, thank you, Biafrans, I appreciate you. Thank you for the support. Akamarama. Thank you, after, after all the scripture said, Jesus said, let your life shine before men that they may see your good work. So we cannot light our ha, our candle and hide it under the table. Our APM light must continue to shine and our own light will also continue to shine out. That the world may see and that darkness will be disappeared. Thank you so much.
So how much did he give?
Fifty egemma.
Wow.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Our next person is, uh, honorable, okay, please take the mic, take the mic.
Uh, thank you, thank you, thank you, one more, that big girl, good evening, uh, good evening, Biafrans.
Good evening, sir, you are welcome.
Thank you, yes, uh, just like Victor doing, uh, we live for school road. And if you live for such, uh, for such a place, for a school road, you always go later to the school.
That's true, you talk.
Uh, yes, now, because you will be said, they want a written, and it's waiting for the better. I try, you know, it, yes, you don't, uh, uh, staff assembly, if you come, you correct.
That's true, that's very true.
FPM, good evening, uh, uh, honorable Biafrans, honorable. The cabinet member, Biafrans, uh, in general, and they were. Good evening, I have been, they were, uh. Yes, we are today to answer your, your current call, because, uh, now. Only a couple, uh, so it's the, the parties to respond. And, uh, as you do that, it is special of honor. Thank you for today, for making this happen. And, uh, I kind of, uh, enjoyed the, the rapport. They together, because, uh, I cannot observe that, it's like, uh, this color, or the color that you people. Uh, uh, broke is being shared across all Biafran nation.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes, uh, uh, that is good. So, um, now, uh, uh, boy, I will also, um. I will also don't know which states that have, uh, all collected their shares, but let, let me just make a pick.
Okay, let me, let me, let me, Maz, okay, let me give you the state that have not been, have not picked.
O- okay, okay, yeah, so that our, our.
Yes. Omambala has not been mentioned here, Awukku has not been mentioned here. Yes, Ogoda has not been mentioned.
Uh, uh, okay, what of A, A P?
Eh, eh, A B B, I don't hear A B B itself today, I haven't heard it back, I haven't heard.
Okay, so that's okay, that's still, uh, that's still, uh.
AP, yes, I haven't had AP too, yeah, we still have a lot.
Okay, let me, let me just, uh, make a bomb, bomb, pick the, the lucky ones out of, uh, the base you are now. So, I will. I will pick, uh, oh, on cola, oh, for an energy, I mean, I have a few AP.
Okay.
I will pick another one on behalf of Ogoda.
Okay.
I will pick another one on behalf of, uh, Okigwa.
Yeah. Yeah.